Councilmember Parker?
Here.
Councilmember Stern?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Guston?
Here.
Councilmember Pruitt?
Here.
Councilmember Katz?
Here.
Councilmember Schwartz?
Here.
Mayor Midding?
Here.
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by Resolution 269-2013, setting the 2014 meeting dates, sending a copy to the record and the Jewish standard, filing a copy in the Township Clerk’s office, and posting it on the municipal building bulletin board, and the mayor hereby directs that this statement be included in the next.
Good evening and welcome to tonight’s meeting. We also have with us our Township Manager, William Browton, our Township Clerk, Jamie Avellina, Executive Assistant to the Township Manager, Issa Abasi, and our Senior Clerk, Colleen Hannigan and Jennifer Jackson. We also have with us our Township Attorney, Stanley Turrets, and Bill Rupp. The council reorganization meeting will take place Tuesday, July 1st, 2014, beginning at 6:00 PM at the municipal complex. The next televised council meeting will take place on Tuesday, July 15th, 2014, with legal opening to begin at 7:00 PM and public input to begin at 8:00 PM. There will be an information session being held at 7:00 PM on Monday, June 30th regarding the township reevaluation process. The meeting will be held in the MP1 at the Richard Rota Center. Independence Day, July 4th, beginning at 9:30 AM, we’ll line up at Queen Anne Road. The parade will end at O.T. Park. It begins at Queen’s Course. In observance of Independence Day, all township administrative offices will be closed on Friday, July 4th. Registration for the summer townwide garage sale is now open. Register at our website, www.tenecknj.gov, or contact Issa Abasi. There was no closed session tonight. We do have two agenda motions where I’m going to be adding the presentation to Ms. Genevieve Mayberger in honor of her volunteer service, and also a presentation by TNEC Junior Soccer. If anybody has any objections? No. I’d just like to also wish the graduating class of TNEC High School 2014, congratulations, and hope they enjoy their future. Let’s give them a round of applause. First item on tonight’s agenda is, I’d like to recognize our State Senator and State Majority Leader, Loretta Weinberg, who’s here. First item of tonight’s agenda is the 2014 Matthew Feldman Award. Deputy Mayor Guston, if you’d like to join me off the desk. Would the members of the Community Relations Advisory Board please join us? Every year, the Community Relations Advisory Board picks a deserving individual for the Matthew Feldman Award for volunteer service and the people who set an example for the members of our TNEC community. With that, I’d like to present to you the Chair of our Community Relations Advisory Board, Patricia White.
Thank you. To the council, to our TNEC community, good evening. This is a time of the year that the community comes together to say thank you. It gives us great pleasure to present the 2014 Matthew Feldman Award. This year’s Matthew Feldman Award is presented to an organization that has been praised by the Star Ledger as the Film Festival with a social conscience. This organization is entering its ninth year of serving the TNEC community. It could not be more in line with the mission of TNEC’s Advisory Board on Community Relations as its theme is to promote our town as a strong model of multiculturalism at its best. Ladies and gentlemen, I introduce to some and present to others Mr. Jeremy Lentz and the representatives of TNEC’s International Film Festival. Before we move forward, thank you, I would like to refer this now to our Senator, Senator Weinberg.
Thank you very much. Thank you to the mayor and council for helping to keep this award alive and well each year, and thank you to Pat White and all the great members of the Community Relations Advisory Board. I have not missed, I don’t think, in the nine years, a TNEC Film Festival. Yes, in fact, at the very first one, as Judy just reminded me, my colleague, Assemblywoman Valerie Huddle, and I dressed up with boas and all kinds of crowns in our hair and really pretended we were on the red carpet. And you have continued to live up to our expectations. The films are wonderful, the camaraderie and the community that you helped build is stupendous, and you also serve a little bit of an economic development for our main areas and the areas around the various venues that you show this. Judy is a remarkable cheerleader, along with the rest of the folks here. And to you, Jeremy, we do have a joint legislative resolution, and nobody gets an award without getting a citation from the New Jersey state law, at least nobody around this area gets an award without this. Unanimously passed by both the Senate and the Assembly, sponsored by myself, Assemblyman Johnson, Assemblywoman Huddle, and I’m not going to read all the whereases, everybody here knows the resolved clause, is the most important. So let’s be it resolved by the Senate and General Assembly of the State of New Jersey that this legislature hereby honors and salutes the TNEC International Film Festival, pays tribute to its meritorious history of service and leadership, and extends best wishes for continued success and vigor in the years ahead, and I know you will have that. Thank you very much.
We have a couple of awards from the township. One is a plaque that resides in this room, but just looking at some of the names on this plaque, we actually have several of the folks in the room with us tonight, previous award winners. But the 2014 TNEC International Film Festival winner of the Matthew Feldman Community Relations Award, presented by the TNEC Advisory Board on Community Relations, to one who has demonstrated an ongoing commitment to intergroup in community relations and fosters the spirit of community and exemplifies volunteerism. So that’s step one from the council. And step two...
That one you...
That one stays here, but this one goes home with you guys. Again, just the recognition from the township and from the Community Relations Advisory Board for everything you do as far as generating spirit around town with all the different venues and all the different programs and all the excitement throughout the film festival. Congratulations and thank you for doing what you guys do.
On behalf of the council and as someone who was fortunate enough to be featured in a documentary that was in the film festival, and I thank you for that, the response that I get, not only for the documentary, but the things that you guys do throughout this country as well as globally, is absolutely phenomenal. You are the social conscience of TNEC at this point, and the films that we put in our film festival really make us think and ponder and reflect on what kind of society and community we want to live in. So I thank you for that and congratulations for your well-deserved award.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Thank you so much. This is such a humbling honor to receive such praise and to receive these awards from the State Assembly, the township, and the TNEC Community Board on, TNEC Advisory Board on Community Relations. TIFF is entering its ninth year, and we wouldn’t be here without our co-founders who are here, so I’d like to tip my hat to co-founders Ellen Rand and Judy Disler. If it wasn’t for them, what started nine years ago, as the Star Ledger wrote in their recent article on us this past November, it started on a treadmill at Glen Point. But, you know, five years ago, I took over the festival, and, you know, having been in TNEC for several years prior, there was something that always struck me so great about our community, and that was the diversity within this community and how this community came together on so many different levels and how involved people were in the sense of community spirit, volunteerism, activism. So we felt that there wasn’t a better theme that could possibly fit this festival and showcase this town than activism, because it is a history of TNEC. I mean, we’re so fortunate to live in a community that has such a unique history that voted to integrate its public school system in the 1960s, that has always been at the forefront of change, and change in a positive way. So this film festival strives year after year to not only talk about our differences, but also talk about what unites us as a community, and to come together and celebrate that, and to debate, and to meet your neighbors and come together. And I think, you know, there are kind of three overriding themes that stand out to me about this film festival and our community. And the first is love, because I think everybody that is here in this room has a huge sense of love for what they do, and it truly is a passion, a passion in which people volunteer. All of our TIFF members who serve are volunteers, and they work tirelessly to get this festival together year after year. It takes what feels like an army to put it together, and the support of everyone in this town. Love is so important in terms of bringing our community together, and I think the films that we showcase help to do that and help people to get to know each other better and hopefully to celebrate each other. The other is art. The art is film in which we showcase the stories, and there are so many stories out there that need to be told, so we try to cherry pick the best and showcase that in TNEC. And the other, of course, is activism, which is our theme, which continues to be our theme and I think a strong theme for TNEC. You know, we saw this town come together last year during our festival when we helped in reopening the TNEC cinemas, which had been dark for about a year prior, and it was kind of a devastating blow to the town. And we really, so I want to, you know, just take a special thank you to acknowledge how this township, the town council, the police department, the fire department, the planning board, everyone really came together and worked together as a community effort to make sure that the festival went off without a hitch and that we were able to showcase our opening night last year of the Central Park Five and the TNEC cinemas. And we want to thank all of our sponsors, all of our volunteers, all the businesses and cultural and community organizations that support us, and the people who have donated year after year. And with that, I’ll just say a few remarks just regarding this year’s festival, which will be held November 7th to the 9th. And we’re spotlighting women’s issues this year, so there will be more themes that relate to women’s issues, women’s activism, et cetera. So we encourage you to support us, and you can do that by liking us on Facebook. You can go to our website, tenecfilmfestival.org, and like us. We have recently just created a Twitter account. We’re now on Twitter and Instagram, so you can follow us there to get the most up-to-date information. And just continue to come, continue to donate, and continue to talk about us, because that’s what keeps us here year after year. So, you know, on behalf of all the volunteers that are here, the town, the community, we truly thank each and every one of you from the bottom of our hearts. This means so much, and we’re so proud to have TNEC to showcase with this film festival. Thank you, everybody.
Anybody have any comments? Congratulations.
I think Jeremy put it very well that it takes, he mentioned, said it takes an army, Jeremy, to put this all together, but that army has some leadership to it, and I want to congratulate the leadership of the TNEC International Film Festival on being outstanding leaders, and congratulations on all the...
I just wanted to comment about the Central Park Five. Apparently those gentlemen have some money to spend nowadays, and that’s a wonderful thing.
Pat?
Jeremy, congratulations again. Thank you for your leadership, and I look forward to this year’s Film Festival dealing with women.
Thank you. Oh. Wendy?
Wendy. Come on up.
Good evening, everybody. It’s really a great night to be a part of the TNEC Advisory Board for Community Relations to recognize a wonderful organization like the TNEC International Film Festival. And now, we want to recognize a really very important, also very important organization in town that some people owe their lives to. Can you guess what it is? It is the TNEC Volunteer Ambulance Corps. Some of these people... I want to bring up Kiwi Fight. Some of these people are your neighbors that do heroic efforts for us, and if you’ve ever been in a position to deal with them, you are, we are incredibly grateful. So we want to honor you with a donation in memory of Martin Greenwald, who some of you may know as a past Chair of the TNEC Advisory Board. Thank you.
Didn’t see you sneaking. Former Mayor Kiwi Fight. Say a few words.
Sure. Thank you again to the Advisory Board. One day I’ll come back, I promise. But it’s actually good timing, because if you live in TNEC within the last week or so, you should have received your annual fundraising mailing from the ambulance corps. So please, we’re there for you 24/7. You know, we could use your support in order to continue to do that. And all of our members are volunteer, and we don’t bill anyone, so we want to try to keep that up. So we need your help. Thank you so much.
With that, with us, our tradition, we break now for coffee and cake, so... Do you want to do that? Oh, I’m sorry. So everybody stay seated. Do you want to do it? Is he here?
No.
We have one presentation. Unfortunately, he’s not here with us this evening. It is to Howard Prichel. But before I read this certificate to Howard, I would like to say thank you to the manager and his staff, because this would not be possible. They worked very tirelessly with us to make this a success, and we say thank you to all of you. We really appreciate you. The other person that helps to make this possible, in addition to all of the Advisory Board, the TNEC Advisory Board on Community Relations presents this certificate to Howard Prichel in appreciation for your continued support and service to the Advisory Board and the community. So we’ll see to it that Howard gets this. Thank you.
Whenever we’re doing something wrong on council, we’ll be more than happy to tell us. She can’t be with us tonight because she’s feeling under the weather, but Ms. Akry, if you and the rest of the Snivison Block Association coming on up? The TNEC Township Council extends a heartfelt thank you to Genevieve Mayberger for many years of service and your endless contribution to TNEC Township, and accepting on her behalf is her daughter, Elise Mayberger. Give her a round of applause. And I’m going to pass the mic over to... Oh, come on, I’m sorry. I’m passing the mic over to State Senator Loretta Weinberg, who also has another resolution.
Mayor and council. You know, the mayor kind of touched on the fact that your mother was never shy about sharing her opinions, something that I sort of identify with, for those of you who might know me. But Genevieve is really one of my role models, and I’m sorry that she’s not here in person. Hopefully, she’s watching on television. And know that she is being toasted and celebrated, and we do have the resolution. And as I said, I don’t usually read all the whereases, but I just want to read this one paragraph about her. Whereas Genevieve Mayberger, who served with distinction as an educator in New York City, has given generously of her time, energy, and resources as a member of and a leader within numerous civic and community organizations, including TNEC Social Service and Affirmative Action Committees, the Democratic Party, and the Northeast TNEC Block Association. And whereas, in addition, Genevieve Mayberger has made selfless and tireless efforts through her service as co-leader of a Brownie troop. And it goes on. She’s really a phenomenal woman. She is a treasure here in TNEC. She’s been a wonderful friend, put me in my place once or twice over the years, and it is with great love that we present this resolution to her. So thank you very much. The Northeast TNEC Block Presidents Association presents this certificate to Genevieve Mayberger in grateful appreciation for her dedicated, selfless service to the Northeast TNEC Block Presidents Association and the TNEC community as a whole. And I’d just like to add to that, is that I have worked with Genevieve. I usually call her Mrs. Mayberger, but tonight I’m going to say Genevieve. But I’ve worked with her on quite a few committees, and I think I first met Mrs. Mayberger when she was the campaign manager for Mel Henderson. And after that, after the Pinnell shooting, we served on a committee that the township asked us to serve on, which was institutional racism. And from that, I think we both learned a lot, we gave a lot, but we learned more. But Mrs. Mayberger’s main focus had been the children of this community. And I must say, she often, she often say that, oh yeah, I know Bill Bright when he was running around as a youngster. So she knows most of the children around here, and this is one of the things that she prided herself most in. And for her to tell us that she was resigning her position as the president of her block association and the Northeast TNEC Block Presidents Association, we felt that, well, we should honor her in some way, because she has given so much to us and the whole community. She’s been there, so we figure we should be there for her. So we present this to her daughter, along with some flowers for her. We know, we know she likes to peddle around in her garden, but we figure, you know, maybe now she can’t do that, so she needs to sit and smell the roses. So, thank you.
Yeah, it’s a privilege for me to be here to honor somebody as great as Genevieve Mayberger. She was a block association president way back when the block associations were just beginning, and she’s a role model for all of us, and I recommend that if she’ll talk to you and you want to start an association, to call up Genevieve.
Councilman Katz?
Yes. There’s only one way I could think of to describe Ms. Mayberger, and that is she’s a class act. She really is a great community leader, a tireless advocate for our residents, and a real asset to the entire township. Really proud to call her a friend. I’ve also been the recipient of many of those emails. So you know that she’s very busy between all of us, but she’s there when things she has to say are, you know, to criticize, but she’s also there to compliment, and that’s a real leader, and well-deserved.
It struck me as an interesting story. I hope you guys enjoy it as well. But my first year on council, Genevieve came to advocate for one of her neighbors. There was a big pothole on an on-ramp to Route Four, and her neighbor had gotten a flat tire and came to a council meeting with a receipt from the auto shop for the tire that was destroyed and the damaged rim, and beseeching council to provide some economic relief for the damage. And I went up to both of them after the meeting, and I said, I just want, you know, I want to share with you my thoughts on this so that you have realistic expectations. TNEC is never going to pay that bill. And I remember one of my colleagues at the time came up to me immediately afterward and says, you can’t talk like that to residents. You know, I had just gotten on council, and I said, no, I think, I think people appreciate, you know, an honest, an honest word and have those realistic expectations. And three years later, Ms. Mayberger was the first lawn sign I put out on my reelection. She became a great sounding board and a tremendous advocate for not only her personal friends and neighbors, but for the town as a whole. And her encouragement for me being as candid as I was meant an awful lot to me, and I cherished her participation in every meeting she came to, whether she was here to throw tomatoes or to throw roses.
You talked about honesty, and Ellie mentioned criticism and compliments. One thing about Genevieve, as we all know, as many of us in the room, certainly on the council, have been recipients of those compliments as well as that criticism, but she’s always honest about it. She was always a straightforward and honest person, and you knew she meant it from the heart. And I think that we will be benefiting, although she may not be here physically tonight, hopefully we’ll be benefiting from her honesty and her wisdom for many years to come.
The word that comes to mind when I think about Mrs. Mayberger is her passion and her commitment to whatever it is that she was involved in. She inspired me and inspired others to get involved and to stay involved in the community. I wish her well. I wish her a speedy recovery. We didn’t always agree on everything, but that’s healthy. It’s healthy to have disagreements. It helps you grow as an individual. And I wish her well in her retirement from community service.
And Elise, I’ll close. My first year as mayor in 2010, you know, I call it, it depends what you remember, you know, I call it the Year of the Tree, whether it was Senator Weinberg’s tree on Cedar Lane, or for a whole year, there was a tree that her neighbor had that she needed to get cut down. And I watched her take care of her neighbor in a way that inspired me to make sure that I take care of the town the same way. So please give her my thanks for that, because that’s something that I like to learn from everybody who comes in here, and that’s something she taught me. Please give us her best wishes and congratulations. Thank you.
Mayor? Mayor? And I just, I just want to congratulate...
And I just, I just want to congratulate Ms., Ms. Mayberger. I've known her for many years. I didn't know her when I was running around the town as a, as a young child, and she's always been there for me. She's a person that I always went to, to, to talk about different things in town, and I appreciated her being the mother that, that, that she was to me. And I just wish her all the best, and I wanted to say thank you.
Elise, you want to say a few words?
Well, you think it was difficult for you, being on the receiving end of her opinions? I've had 53 years of it, and yes, she's pretty direct and straightforward in her, her comments and her criticism. It's sometimes hard to really comprehend the impact someone has on your life when you're living with them, but as you get older, she taught me a lot about responsibility, but probably the biggest thing she taught me is that politics begins at this level. And if you really want to affect change in your country, in your community, that you have to be involved at this grassroots level, because it's not the presidential elections that are going to turn the tide in your daily lives, it's what goes on here. As a result of that, I don't think I've ever missed an election. When I lived abroad, I actually was so proud of myself that I voted in absentia, not once but twice. And also, her name is right below mine in the registrar, so she always knows if I haven't voted yet and calls me. This is the first year in I don't know how many years, maybe three decades, that she hasn't been able to work the polls, but she's been able to do it, getting up at four o'clock in the morning and getting home at nine o'clock at night for virtually every election. That put, I guess, a lot of you here into office. Let's see, I just wrote something quickly down on a, on a receipt. Let's see, she, we all know that she felt very strongly that it's her civic duty to affect positive change and leadership in our community. I think you've all seen that in, in real time. And I want to thank you not only on her behalf, but I also want to thank you for showing your appreciation for her efforts throughout these many, many years. I know that her, her criticism may not have always been positive, but it's the type of criticism that's intended for us to be able to learn from and grow from. So it's not negativity, for negativity's sake, it's to point out things. And, you know, I'm, I'm seeing very clearly how, what a great example is and what a, a great leader she has been in so many ways. And thank you all. She's going to appreciate these awards.
Our next recognition is for TNEC Junior Soccer League. If you guys want to just come on up. So before this, this current council ends, and we, we, we put on a new council on, oh, Everybody, everybody should take part in this. Everybody should take part in this. Now, forgive me, we're just going to wait for Councilwoman Parker. You got it? So, hold on, hold on, wait, wait. Ken Hoffman still here, or he left? Oh, there he goes. Okay.
Tall guys in the back.
Tall guys in the back. So I came on the council in 2008, and before that, there was Councilwoman Parker, Ellie Cat, Councilman Ellie Katz, and Deputy Mayor Adam Gusson. And at that time, they told me about a project that they were all working on and trying to get done. And through the tireless efforts of the Parks and Recreation Playground, through the tireless efforts of our township, through the tireless efforts of Deputy Mayor Adam Gusson as our liaison to Parks and Recreation, and the tireless efforts of Ken Hoffman, Bill Burke, and all the people involved in TNEC Junior Soccer. If I miss anybody, please forgive me, because this was really a group effort. This is something that I'm very proud of, that we voted to pay for, but getting it here was a 12-year process. And give our TNEC Junior Soccer and the people who are involved a big round of applause. Not only did they advocate for this project, but they raised money for this project, and we just like to recognize them. Their certificates will be coming. We didn't get the names in time, but they, they will be coming. And if you would like to say a few words, we will all be more than happy to join you.
So thank you, everybody. And on behalf of the TNEC Junior Soccer League Board, and on behalf of the, I really want to say the kids and the families of TNEC, we thank the council members and the township as a whole for what's been done to bring the sportsplex to reality. It's tremendous. If you have not been out to see the field, please go see the field. I believe it's this Thursday is the opening, opening event at, at 8:00 p.m. TNEC Soccer very proudly donated soccer goals for the short-sighted field along with nets and, and flags and such. And again, it's just, it's, it's a proud event for us to be able to deliver that to the town, and for the sportsplex, and hopefully the 800-plus kids, like some of you guys here tonight, will enjoy it for years and years to come. So thank you.
I also want to say that it's not just for soccer. We have TNEC, okay, and we do have, we do have two football goals. I don't know what they're doing to know. Seriously, the Junior Football League will certainly grow. The centerpiece for our active recreation in town, it will be formally opened on Thursday. I hope to see everybody there. The passive walking path has been fixed around like one-third of a mile, so it's there as well. It is a phenomenal thing that under the direction of Mr. Browton and the administration getting it all done, has worked on, almost, I'm sure, on budget, and came in almost on time, given the horrendous weather that we had, and both as far as the EABRVP, and I see Dr. Powers here as well, that the remediation has been done successfully. Paperwork has been sent to the state. Will be copacetic, ready to roll, and I can't wait to watch everybody having a lot of fun with a lot of smiles, starting on Thursday. Thank you.
Let's take a picture. Oh, wait, I'm sorry. Deputy Mayor Gusson would like to see.
Yeah, just, just a couple of words on this. One of the, one of the first things that I came across on council in 2006, then Councilwoman Jackie Kates and I formed a subcommittee to begin looking at the process from the town's perspective of how we go about rehabilitating the, the soccer fields in Voty Park. In 2006, and well, actually up until just about a month or so ago, our facilities were in such disrepair that other towns' travel leagues refused to come and play in TNEC. It wasn't safe. It wasn't an appropriate facility, certainly not appropriate for, for our guests, but, but more importantly, not appropriate for our own children. Over, over the last eight years, we've had the opportunity to not only come together as a community, all the different sports leagues, from TNEC Junior Soccer and Stingrays to TNEC Junior Football, working with the, the town, our professionals, our hired professionals, through the issues of remediation, construction, all the way to Thursday night at 8:00 will be the, the ribbon cutting. But this is, there's so many hands making this happen. There's so many hands in the, in the pot that we couldn't, we couldn't possibly name everyone that was involved, but there really were some, some critical key players. Dr. Hoffman, Jim Dunleavy, Georgia Skakis from Parks Playgrounds and Recreation Advisory Board, this council, and the, the most recent prior council. While it's something that, that I took very passionately, and I'll tell you that there's funny-looking goals on my football field, that it's not a soccer field. It's a football field that we let soccer players use. But whatever, whatever group you, whatever group you come from, whether you're a soccer aficionado or, or a football player, we have a truly world-class facility that the children of TNEC deserve and will be able to use for, for some time. And I just want to congratulate everyone who had a hand in the process. If we can give a round of applause. And, and most importantly, to, to our, to our youth athletes, to the kids who now are going to come home not soaked in mud, because it rained four days earlier, but the drainage in Voty Park is, is now just tremendous. The first night we were out on the field, we did a walk-through. It was a torrential downpour. It rained about an inch and a half in about 45 minutes, and I was literally standing in the middle of the field, and the ground looked dry. The, the substructure of the field, just everything, the engineering, it's just unbelievable what went into making this construction project work, and something that TNEC's going to have to, to be proud of and to enjoy for, for many, many years to come. So thank you for everyone who was involved, and everyone who helped me drive the process from council's perspective. Again, thank you and congratulations.
Where is she? Gila, would you like to come up, please? No, she says no. So what do you want me to do?
I'm a police officer.
Come on up, please.
I squirted.
You should be very happy. So today, we have new members joining our council. I'd like to, I saw him here before, but Councilman-elect Jason Castle and Councilman-elect Alan Son will be coming on, and Deputy Mayor Adam Gusson and Councilman Yit Stern have, are going to be moving on to bigger and better things. From the bottom of my heart, I can say like, I can only say that last night I had dinner with Nancy Pelosi, and this morning I had breakfast with Joe Biden. And we talked about issues not only impacting our country, we talked about impacting the world in those issues. And I remember to this day when Adam asked me, do you want to serve on the planning board? And I didn't fill out, fill out the application, and it was a time in my life where I had a family illness, and I was just getting through that, that time. And he actually came to my house, and he made sure that I filled out the application, and then he turned it in for me. And I think a lot how different my life would be over the last eight years if you did not do that for me. And I can say through thick and thin, through three elections, through everything else that we've been through, it's been my honor to serve with you. And I really, really appreciate that, and I appreciate your friendship for all these years, and our council, for your tireless dedication to the TNEC community and your years of service. As a member of the TNEC governing body, I'd like to present you with this, and thank you Councilman Yit Stern, who I like to call my conscience, because I remember a long time ago, you told me that, you know, the responsibility that comes with being a councilperson and the responsibility of this town, and all the different factions, and all the different areas, and all the different things that happen that you have to kind of go around those minefields. And when you came on in 2010 and you, you gave me your support for mayor, was that 200, you know, 2010, your support for mayor, I was honored, because rightfully so, I think you deserved it. And then in 2012, I thought rightfully so, you deserved it again, but you stepped aside for the betterment of this community, because you thought it was the right thing to do, even though you had the votes to be mayor both times. And I appreciate that, and I also think how different my life would be if you were sitting in that chair versus me. So I thank you for your friendship, and I thank you for your service.
What was better, dinner or breakfast?
He's very fine. There you go.
Anybody else like to say? Do you want to say anything?
Just very briefly, on, on election night a few weeks ago, was surrounded by friends and supporters as the, the news came in that I'll be taking a, a new step in my life. And there were a lot of down faces, there were a lot of looks of disappointment, at least in the room that I was in. But in that room, there were three somewhat happy, smiling faces. And I get to, I get to spend an awful lot more time with, with Molly and Sydney and my wife, Shari. The last eight years has been difficult, and I, and I thank Shari for, for everything that she's put up with, the, the late nights, the long days, and the, the meetings, and the emails and phone calls, and how it takes an hour to go to Stop &amp; Shop four blocks away from our house to get a gallon of milk, because six or seven people stop you in the aisles. And so I'm looking very forward to, to the next step, reacquainting myself with my family. And TNEC will do what, what TNEC's always done, and that's be a, be a leader to the communities around us and to the rest of the country. And I look forward to seeing continued great things from our town.
Councilman Stern, does the man a few words would like to talk later, or would you like to talk? Okay, he'll talk later. Okay, so we'll get back to the meeting. The next item on tonight's agenda is the Holocaust. Who wants to say something? Molly, you want to say something?
No.
Oh, okay.
You sure? What? Do you want to say something? No? I don't know why I'm supposed to say "hey."
Tonight, she's taking after her mother.
And next item on tonight's agenda is the Holocaust presentation, so we'll go back up to the dais and then the Holocaust Commemoration Committee.
Adam.
Is he locked up? Okay, thank you. Bruce, Mr. Fox, if you'd like to come on up?
Mr. Mayor, I would be delighted to talk to you, Rabbi Berg.
Oh, hello, Rabbi Berg, how, how are you? Come on up.
Mr. Mayor, council members, fellow citizens, my name is Steve Fox. I'm a TNEC resident. I'm a TNEC business owner. I'm the proud son of a Holocaust survivor. My father escaped the Warsaw Ghetto, lost his parents and his siblings during the war, and joined the partisans during the last part of the war. Upon coming to the United States, he was very active in working with organizations to commemorate the Holocaust so that nobody would forget what happened. He, like many other survivors, is no longer with us, so I dedicate this presentation to him and all those who went through the war. I'm the co-chair of the TNEC Holocaust Commemoration Committee and co-chair of the Bergen County Holocaust Memorial Committee, for whom I'm just talking on behalf of them. The last time I stood here was over a year ago. We were discussing having a Holocaust memorial and a tolerance center in Andreas Park. As many of you know, that proposition fell through because of some deed restrictions and on Andreas Park. So now it is my privilege to present to you our proposal to have a Holocaust memorial in Brett Park. A Holocaust memorial is a place where people can pay tribute to those who were killed during the war, people who died strictly because of who they were. It was worth type of ethnic cleansing, destroying the lives of millions of men, women, and children. A Holocaust memorial is a place where families can dedicate a stone or a plaque to A Holocaust memorial is a place where families can dedicate a stone or a plaque to descendants, many of whom had no burial or whose bodies were put in mass graves. A Holocaust memorial is a place where children will learn history and discuss the lessons that we could learn from such terrible events. It's a testament to the evils of racism and the importance of fighting intolerance in our society. It's a way to assure the survivors that we will never forget the horrors that they experienced and our way of saying that never again will we let this happen again. Why a public memorial? This has been a subject that's been brought up quite often. Public memorial stimulates discussion to all who drive by and all who visit it. A public memorial is accessible to all. It's a symbol of a town or a county's dedication to memorialize an event. A public memorial takes a small parcel of land and gives it a holy purpose and enhances the area around it. A public memorial is society's way of acknowledging a specific event and helping us all learn from it. Memorials in public places is a time-honored tradition. In Bergen County, there's a new Martin Luther King memorial that's going to be built on county land. It'll be located on the Hackensack River Parkway as it crosses Fairleigh Dickinson's campus, and it will be open to the public. I will say that in all my research, I did not hear any opposition to having that memorial on public land, and rightfully so. We support the Martin Luther King memorial and we feel it's fitting, just like we feel our memorial is fitting to be on public land. Other Holocaust memorials take different shapes, they're in different cities, they're all over the country, they're all over the world. They can look like the one in New Orleans, Boston, Portland, Miami Beach. They all have their own character. We will endeavor to make something that's fitting to the character of our community and something that is fitting for the environment. In Sheepshead Bay, Brooklyn, the city of New York funded the Holocaust memorial to the tune of $1.8 billion. In Liberty State Park in New Jersey, the state of New Jersey commissioned a sculptor called Liberation showing an American soldier carrying a death camp survivor. In the state of Ohio, the state commissioned a Holocaust memorial at the State House, which was also done with public funds. Why Bret Park? Well, Bret Park has very good reasons for us to pick it. Number one, it's centrally located, and we picked an unused area of the park. There is nothing there. There are also no deed restrictions. After what we went through with Andreas Park, we thought it would be important to go through the deeds and make sure there was nothing to restrict us to do this kind of memorial. It's visible from River Road, and it's not near any river, any trails. The area that we're discussing is well over a football field away from the water. So, we're taking a piece of land that is literally not used for anything. It's just there. And we plan to put something there that will be meaningful and will give people a reason to visit that park. I put a little bit of the history of Bret Park up here. I won't go through the whole thing, but basically, it was farmland. At one point, it was a resort. And the last thing that was proposed for Bret Park was in 1975. The township planned an elaborate recreational area, which was to include swimming in the cove of the Hackensack that entered Bret Park, softball and football fields, tennis courts, a historical village, gift shops, restaurants, and parking for 72 vehicles. Ultimately, it didn't go through, but let me say that in the last 39 years, there have been no plans for anything in Bret Park. So, we look at this area, we say, nothing is happening, there are no restrictions. And ultimately, if they were 39 years ago planning to have this major resort, major parking and restaurants and ballfields, having a memorial there should be nothing more than a privilege for us and nothing more than a blessing to the town. What are we proposing? Well, the first thing I want to make sure to point out is that what you're looking at is not any sort of finalized plan because before we go to the expense of putting together a finalized plan, we wanted to make sure we had the venue. The memorial, some of the things that we will have, we'll have some sort of walkway leading to a structure. That structure will contain historical information and a place for dedications where people like myself can take my children and one day their children and say, "That was your great-grandfather, that was your great-grandmother. This is what happened to them." The final design will be determined by our committee, and we will enlist the assistance with many experts to come up with something truly meaningful for everybody. And I want to thank David Avakasas of our committee for putting together this rendering of such short notice. When we do come up with a final design, we will come back to the council and say, "This is what we would like to do. Please give us your blessing." Why approve this project? Well, this project will add prestige to the township and attract visitors. It'll showcase TNEC to the rest of the state as a township dedicated to promoting tolerance and education. The project will be a blessing for the town and an impressionable, meaningful place for everybody who visits. It will be a blessing to the diminishing number of Holocaust survivors who will see that TNEC will help keep the memory of a Holocaust alive long after they are gone. We need to do this for the survivors, we need to do this for our children, we need to do this for ourselves and our community, and we need to do it now. So, I ask the members of the council, consider what is in Bret Park today and consider what we can do and what we can do for Bret Park to make it a beautiful memorial that people will be proud to visit and that people in the township will say, "Look what we did. We did something very special for the community and for all Bergen County." And now, I'd like to introduce Rabbi Stephen Berg. He serves as the Eastern Director of the Simon Wiesenthal Center and Museum of Tolerance. The center is a global human rights organization started by the famous Nazi hunter, Simon Wiesenthal. Rabbi Berg has consulted on many museums and memorials across the country and is a Bergen County resident. I thank you for your time. Rabbi Berg, please.
Thank you very much. Actually, I wasn't planning on starting like this, but Simon Wiesenthal Center, we actually have a film division. We've won two Academy Awards, and we know how important the film festivals are. So, I just want to compliment the council on recognizing how important these film festivals are for towns literally across the country and especially here in TNEC. So, thank you very much. Okay. The Simon Wiesenthal Center, Simon Wiesenthal, as you heard, was a very famous Nazi hunter. He came out of the concentration camps, having spent five years there, and wanted to do something meaningful with his life. And he spent the rest of his life dedicated to tracking down the perpetrators of the Holocaust. And he was ultimately successful in leading to the arrest and extradition over 1,100 Nazis. And he was a real hero. When we encountered him in the late '70s, we told him we wanted to build a museum of the Holocaust and we wanted to name it for him. And he said, "I think it's a great idea, but I'm an activist. If you want to be activist, then we have something to talk about." And we started to get involved with him right away, and our first project with him was the statute of limitations on murder in Germany was about to run out. We started a lobbying campaign and changed that for genocide, there is no statute of limitations. But we realized when we went on to build our museum, it wasn't just going to be a place of artifacts for people to come and walk around. These museums have to be a place of inspiration, a place of conversation. These museums and memorials have to be a place to start people thinking about these greater issues. The word genocide did not exist until after the Holocaust. It was coined by Raphael Lemkin, who lobbied the UN to create a crime against humanity called genocide. In the years since the Holocaust, I'd like to say that the world has learned their lesson, but I look at places like Bosnia, I look at places like Rwanda, I look at Darfur, I look at today's New York Times, and I see that Boko Haram has kidnapped another 60 girls and 30 boys. And there is an understanding that there is evil out there. And it's important for us, for the future generations, to remind them what happened. Today, we are inundated by requests across this country of folks putting up memorials, really in all types of places, because there's a realization that the generation that fought in World War II, that your generation of Holocaust survivors, it's coming to an end shortly. And our responsibility is to remind the future generations about what happened, the largest mass genocide ever in human history, and to have it in a place and in a public place, in a place where people see it, not someplace behind a wall. You know, and I even had this conversation about museums versus memorials. Certain ways, I'm more pro-memorials, even though I'm in the museum business, because people will come to Museum Maximum once a year. A memorial is something they will see over and over again. And I was thinking, as we were talking about the park, that's obviously not the location of this. When we talk about the park, you talk about the kids playing and that whole vision of them saying to mom and dad, "What's that over there?" And then telling the story. Because if we don't tell the story, if we don't tell the future generations what happened, we don't tell them about the heroes in the United States Army that went over there, as you saw that beautiful memorial, to save these people. If we don't tell those stories, then ultimately, we're in danger of repeating the mistakes of the past. Thank you.
Thank you. Does any council members have any questions? Comments?
Yeah, this is a very delicate topic. And I want to be clear that I think having a Holocaust memorial park or having a Holocaust memorial in TNEC is a great idea. I'm not sure that putting it in recreational parks is the best location. Now, Bret Park is used for games periodically, and there are lots of open space parks in TNEC that are used for contemplation, for recreation, or for whatever. The other problem is that once we give a piece of public land to a particular group, it opens the door to requiring that we be prepared to give a piece of public land to whatever other group comes forward. Now, I have a recommendation. The municipal green has a Sarah Krieger Memorial Garden, Memorial to the Veterans, the Sarah Dunker Memorial, the Paul Volcker Memorial. And the county green has various memorials around those buildings. Those buildings are not recreational in any way, and neither is this one. So, my suggestion would be to look at the possibility of putting it here rather than putting it in a park.
Just a few comments of my own. You said there was no plans for this park for 39 years. Just want to correct that. It's been used for overflow parking for DPW. This is not a treasured green space. This has been an overflow for pickup trucks. On top of that, this field has been not used for recreational sports. It's more of a passive park. There's been some pickup games that have occurred over the last few years, especially when VOTI was out of commission. So, I really think this is a great location for it. I personally think that Andreas Park was a great location. The deed restrictions set otherwise, I would hope and I think that the Andreas family that created that deed would have liked that as well, but that's nothing we can do about that. So, this is something I'm very much in favor of. You know, we say never again, but never again seems to be occurring every single day throughout the entire world. I mean, you pick a continent, it's happening right now. And, you know, the memorials, and I like what you said about the memorial and the museum, I had the opportunity last month of going down to the 9/11 memorial of the Pentagon. And that was right to the point. There wasn't a line, there wasn't an admission. There was, you parked your car and you walked around to a similar situation with stones. And it really drove the point home in 30 minutes. And it wasn't this event that you'd have to make, you know, pack up a lunch and spend the whole day at. And it really is right to that point. And just to Dr. Prue, to the comment about, you know, if we open up this public land to whatever other group, to this group, we have to invite to every other group. I think we can maybe, you know, after several, three, four, five, six million, we can maybe put a threshold that if there's the Holocaust, which was six million Jews and tens of millions of others throughout the whole war, that's a pretty high bar. I don't think we need to set a memorial to any other group that comes along that regrettably 10 or 20 people were killed that we give them a park, that there's millions upon millions of people that were looking to honor their lives and to remember their deaths. So, this has my blessing.
I mean, I support the concept. I supported the concept when the committee was here to talk about Andrew's Park. Obviously, there were some obstacles there that could not be overcome. I'm not sure whether there are any obstacles in Bret Park or whether there's any deed restrictions. I really don't know. It's not really important right now. The concept is a good one. I mean, you know, I think that we should maybe, maybe the council should ask the Parks Playground Recreation Advisory Board to take a look at this. Obviously, there's some legalities involved, and who knows? Maybe they'll come up with a different place that, you know, the committee would like even better. I have absolutely no idea. I mean, maybe Henry's idea will be something they like, who knows? But I mean, I think until we talk about it and move it forward, obviously, you know, we won't really know. So, I would recommend that, you know, we ask, you know, we move this along to the Parks Playground Advisory Board, and which is something that I guess procedurally council would do, right? And see where that goes. So, I support the concept unequivocally.
Councilman Parker?
Mayor, I recall, I don't remember if it was 2006, 2007, when I first got on the council, Sanzare's New Bridgeton came to us and asked us if they could use Bret Park as a parking lot. And I recall that there were different groups that came in and said that it was inappropriate because there were remains there. And I would have some concerns about that in having a memorial in a place where they're to be disrespectful to a different group. So, I don't remember exactly what, who the group was, but I think that, first of all, from the attorney, what are the next steps? What action are we looking for? Just consent to, what steps do we have to take to...
I think before the council could act officially on the proposal, they'd have to see the actual proposal, what's being proposed, how it's being proposed. Are they donating this to the township? Are they leasing it from the township? You know, I don't think we have the legalities of it, but I would think Councilman Stern's suggestion is the first step, to send it to Parks Playground and Recreation for their recommendation. And I would think that it would be their obligation to flush out the details in terms of what this group intends to do. Do they intend to donate the money for the township to build it? Are they undertaking the building of it by themselves and are seeking to have a lease from the township? All those things we have to know before we can rule legally. But I would think all those things get flushed out first by the advisory board with the recommendation, including the actual legal details of what is being proposed and how it's going to work. There are some issues in terms of leasing and transferring property at Bret Park. That's probably going to be a nonstarter if that's part of the deal. If it's a total donation and it's totally open to the public and it's controlled and run by the township in some fashion, then there's probably no legal restrictions. It becomes a policy decision as to what council want to do. But until we see all these details flushed out, I can't really give an opinion as to where we go with it. But I would think the Councilman Stern's recommendation is a good starter to get all these details flushed out, because it has to come back to the council to see what legal vehicle can be developed if this is the place that council wants to support this.
And I also think that we should, in discussing naming properties in honor of individuals we've discussed or previous councils have discussed establishing a policy. If we, if the, you know, council decides that they want to lease or give property, I think that there should be a policy in place for that also, so that it's not just an arbitrary thing that we decide. I think also that we should also perhaps get the opinion of the Environmental Commission as well, in addition to Parks Playground and Recreation.
Let me just say, there's no possibility of the township giving this property. I mean, this is green acres property, this is parkland. There's no way the township in any shape, manner, or form, this council or any future councils, is going to be able to deed this property or lease... councils, is going to be able to deed this property, or lease this property, whereby they're giving up ownership without a whole bunch of hurdles to be approved by Green Acres, as well as the Department of Housing and Urban Development. But in terms of the council approving a memorial that they are in charge of and having it built on township land, as long as the township retains all ownership of the land, that's probably legally doable. But I think we should dissuade this idea that the council can give it away, can lease it, et cetera. That's almost an impossibility. It's a question of allowing the memorial to be built on public property, and what are the rules that are going to govern the building of it and the use of it going forward. But in giving up any kind of ownership, whether it's by lease or by deed, I think that's a nonstarter. So I think that should be eliminated from thinking in terms of this discussion.
Thank you.
Just one other thing, while, and Mr. Terrence brought it up, as far as how Brett Park is encumbered by Green Acres and parkland designation, as far as where Rossi goes, and other state obligations. In 2007, there was a proposal to look at redeveloping the municipal complex. At that point, we identified significant deed, or, you know, significantly tight deed restrictions as far as the use of this property. And from my recollection, as far as how restrictive that was, I don't know that, I don't know that this use would actually meet the letter of the deed restriction. When other memorials or other things were put up, I don't know that that deed restriction had actually been identified at that time. And so I'd have, you know, some concern as to whether or not we could use this property at all. As far as, as far as the location at Brett Park, there are clearly some sensitivities. And we got a presentation, I think it was from the Bergen County Historical Society, as far as the location of the Native American Trading Post and Fort. A truly unique structure, as far as Trading Post and Fort, was not a common Native American entity or use. And so there are, you know, definitely some unique issues of Brett Park. But I do recall that it was restricted to, is fairly well delineated as far as where that was in the park. And so I think we would have the opportunity to identify, to be respectful, as you brought up, to previous inhabitants. But I think that Brett Park is actually significantly large, and that there's certainly, I think, from our looking at this in the past, that there's, that there's space to be able to do this and be respectful of the historic uses of the park as well. This is something that I would strongly advocate for. And in addition to the Environmental Commission and Parks Playground and Recreation Advisory Board, I'd also like council to direct the manager to meet with the group and see what other staff or municipal resources would be needed to guide this in a way. It's like, you know, if the project were based on a lease, or based on purchasing a land, and that's a nonstarter, what can we do to meet, maybe with the manager and the attorney, to initially give that guidance, so that we're not, you know, having this group walk down the wrong path to a goal that couldn't be achieved legally or otherwise? So if we could also ask the manager to get with the attorney and meet with representatives from the group, to provide some initial direction as well.
Yeah, when this idea first came up, I was very excited for, about it, that it was going to happen in Andreas Park, but the deed restriction did not allow us to get this done. And the reason why I was excited, because I understand that symbolism matters. Symbolism of getting this done in a township like Teaneck, and the power of our example as a township to get this done, it was very important to me personally, as well as I think to this country, and as an example of what we need to do and what we need to remember. There are still concentration camps going on today in Burma. They're still going on in Myanmar. And we need to remember, when we say never again, the only way we remember to say never again is because of what happened in World War II. And I was reminded today by someone very important, that the FBI hate crimes list against the Jewish community is still leaps and bounds higher than any other community. And it's something that I think that we should never forget of what hatred is. And I think that having that symbol in Teaneck is very important. So I think that, you know, I will defer to and agree with Councilman Stern, who is also, sits on the State Holocaust Commission, to put this, to get their input from Parks and Recreation. And I don't think it's necessary to talk to the Environmental Commission at this point, just because, you know, maybe we talk to them both at the same time. I kind of see them always at odds with each other. I'd like to get one before we pass it on to the other, rather than talking to both of them at the same time. But if council feels different, or the next council feels different, that's fine also. But I think that that's the prudent manner to move, is just to take it to Parks and Recreation.
Yeah, I don't think we should make the two boards competing. We were looking for the advice of both. And it's up to us to make the decision as to which group we agree with. They may agree.
Okay, Mayor. I just think we need to, there's a threshold question that has to be answered. And Mr. Terrence alluded to it. I think we need to make a decision at some point, and maybe the council needs to discuss it further, as to whether or not we're willing to run a memorial and have it under the jurisdiction of the township. We can't give the land and have another organization run it. It's got to be a township.
Well, we don't know what the memorial is yet.
Yeah, I think when the original plan came before council, as far as the use of the Carriage House, or the footprint of what was the Carriage House in Andreas Park, and there was a learning center, a museum component to it, I think then we had, rightfully had concerns about operating and managing a facility. A monument in a park, I think, is very different than managing a facility like the, you know, the tolerance education center component of the initial proposal. So if we get an idea of the scope of magnitude, you know, the footprint, the physical footprint, the geometry of the memorial, I think that can answer a lot of those questions, in that, you know, we have, we have other memorials and monuments around town that don't require management and operations.
Yeah, I mean, it's got to be, we got to build it. I mean, if we're willing to do that, you know, then we need to go to those other steps. I understand that. But if, if we're not deciding on whether or not we're willing to do that, that's, I think that's the first question we got to answer. We willing to build it?
I think that what we're going to do is give it to Parks and Recreation, see what kind of answers they come up with, and then we'll make that decision, and the next council will make that decision. So you have the direction and consensus of, to send it to Parks and Recreation for advisement and the Environmental Commission?
And for the manager.
And for the manager, and the township attorney to start talking about the logistics to bring back to council. We have that consensus? Yes?
Yeah, we support the concept.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Mark? Okay. Okay. Thank you. Next item on tonight's agenda is public hearings and adoption of ordinances. James, would you like to read the ordinances?
Ordinance number 14-2014, bond ordinance to authorize a 2014 road resurfacing and sidewalk curb and curbing program in, by, and for the township of Teaneck, and the county of Bergen, state of New Jersey, to appropriate the sum of $2,149,000 to pay the cost thereof to appropriate a state grant to make a down payment to authorize the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriation and to provide for the issuance of bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance of such bonds. Ordinance number 15-2014, bond ordinance to authorize stormwater drainage improvements and studies at various locations in, by, and for the township of Teaneck, and the county of Bergen, state of New Jersey, to appropriate the sum of $1 million to pay the cost thereof to make a down payment to authorize the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriation and to provide for the issuance of bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance of such bonds. Ordinance number 16-2014, bond ordinance to authorize various improvements to municipal buildings and facilities in, by, and for the township of Teaneck, and the county of Bergen, state of New Jersey, to appropriate the sum of $475,000.
James, in the mic, please.
To pay the cost thereof to make a down payment to authorize the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriation and to provide for the issuance of bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance of such bonds. Ordinance number 17-2014, bond ordinance to authorize the acquisition and installation of a township-wide audible alert system, and the acquisition of other emergency services, equipment in, by, and for the township of Teaneck, and the county of Bergen, state of New Jersey, to appropriate the sum of $300,000 to pay the cost thereof to make a down payment to authorize the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriation and to provide for the issuance of bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance of such bonds. Ordinance number 18-2014, bond ordinance to authorize the acquisition of new additional or replacement equipment and machinery and new automotive vehicles, including original apparatus and equipment for the use of the Department of Public Works, in, by, and for the township of Teaneck, and the county of Bergen, state of New Jersey, to appropriate the sum of $480,000 to pay the cost thereof, to make a down payment to authorize the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriation and to provide for the issuance of bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance of such bonds. Ordinance number 19-2014, an ordinance amending section 36-11.2 of division 1 of article 2 of chapter 36 entitled Traffic of the Township Code, deleting restricted on-street parking spaces for handicapped from a portion of Windrock Road. Ordinance number 20-2014, an ordinance amending section 27-3 of chapter 27, and appendix 3 of chapter 2 of the code of the township of Teaneck respecting rules and regulations for the fees for the VOTI Park Sports Flex. Ordinance number 21-2014, an ordinance to approve a financial agreement with the Teaneck Senior Housing Urban Renewal LP pursuant to MJSI 40A:20-1SAC. Ordinance number 22-2014, an ordinance adding section 36-11.6 to article 2, parking, division 1, generally, and chapter 36 of the Township Code entitled Traffic relating to the establishment of restricted resident commuter parking decal, parking along a portion of East Oveetine Avenue, also known as Puffin Line, to provide an exception for resident parking permits. Ordinance number 23-2014, an ordinance adding section 36-11.5 to article 2, parking, division 1, generally, and chapter 36 of the Township Code entitled Traffic relating to the establishment of restricted resident commuter parking decal, parking along portions of Elizabeth Avenue, including students, employees, and contracted staff of the township, the township of Teaneck, Board of Education.
Mr. Mayor?
You got one more? That's it.
I'd like to make a motion to table, ordinance 14-2014, 15-2015, 16-2014, 17-2014, 18-2014. Yeah, is there any more, Bob?
Can we procedural, can we table it? Can we, he's, have made a motion to table?
Mr. Caz, you made a procedural motion to table. If there's a second, if there's a second to table, the motion to table, if it's voted up or down with no discussion, if it passes, then these ordinances are in effect dead for this council. And for these ordinances to be reconsidered, they would have to be rehabotized, reintroduced, and go through the entire process by the new council. Once this council tables this, only this council can vote on this, on these ordinances at this time, or if you have a meeting before July 1st, which I highly doubt. So if the effect of a tabling motion that's successful, in essence, ends the discussion on these ordinances, they're not before this council, and it'll be up to the new council to introduce them.
That would be no different than if a majority of council voted no. It would be the exact same scenario, it would have to be.
In order to pass these resolutions, these are bonding resolutions, you need five positive votes. So if you don't have five positive votes, you save a lot of time and effort by tabling. But that's up to you. That's your decision.
Mr. Mayor?
It's already been seconded by Councilmember Pruitt.
Second, there's no discussion, it's an up or down vote. A yes to table means these resolutions will not be considered this evening, and if they are to be considered, they have to start all over again with the new council.
Which numbers? Could you just repeat the numbers?
14 through 18.
14 through 18. Councilmember Parker? No.
No discussion on motion.
Councilmember Stern?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Gosden?
Yes.
Councilmember Pruitt?
Yes.
Councilmember Katz?
Yes.
Councilmember Schwartz?
Yes.
Mayor?
No. Okay.
The only items open for discussion at this portion of the meeting are the remaining ordinances, which require a simple majority of council to table.
Okay. Yeah. Now, the public hearing is now open on the remaining ordinances.
That's ordinances 15 through 23. I mean, 19, sorry. 19 through 23.
19 through 23, that is correct. That's what's open to the subject of discussion.
Traffic, sportsplex, financial agreement with senior housing, general parking, and general traffic with contractual agreements with the board of it. Does anybody have anything to talk about? Would anyone like to? No, no, this is for, just these ordinances. Okay. Seeing now hands, hearing's now closed. Someone like to move?
So moved.
Roll call.
I wanted to just make a comment about ordinance 21-24, 21-214. I see Elizabeth Davis here from Brightside Manor, and I just, I'm happy that we are finally, not we, but that the project, her project, is finally moving forward, and that additional senior housing will be present in the near future. So I just want to say thank you for your persistence in moving this project, and I look forward to seeing it develop.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Parker?
Yes.
Councilmember Stern?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Gosden?
Yes.
Councilmember Pruitt?
Yes.
Councilmember Katz?
Yes.
Councilmember Schwartz?
Yes, and I'm staying on 21.
Mayor?
Yes. Next item on tonight's agenda is good and welfare. This is where anyone can speak on any topic that they would like. Okay, sir, in the front, in the green. Just your name for the record.
Richard Kauf, 1201 Queen Anne Road, Teaneck, New Jersey.
You don't have to give your address anymore, just for the record.
Okay. I'm president of Friends of the Greenway. I'm a member of the Echo Art Committee of the Teaneck Creek Conservancy. I'm a weed warrior, a master gardener. I'm on the board of the Hackensack River Canoe and Kayak Club, and on the flood advisory committee with the riverkeepers. I want to address the Holocaust Memorial. I am very much in favor of having one. However, as Dr. Pruitt stated, I, we are not in favor of having it in Brett Park. I don't, well, let me just step back a second. When the master plan was being debated in Teaneck, we fought very hard for no development along the river in Teaneck. Why? I don't know how everybody else feels. I don't want that waterway to look like Hackensack. You want to build a memorial in Hackensack, you're building it on concrete. You want to build a memorial along the Hackensack River in Teaneck, you're building it on Greenland. That's one position. The Greenway Advisory Committee met last night and voted unanimously against the proposal for this memorial in Brett Park. There is another problem. In 2008, sponsored by Senator Weinberg, Cardnell, and numerous others, a statute was, 1644, was enacted. That statute gives control of what is done at New Bridge Landing to the New Bridge Commission. That commission includes Stupid House, the other houses, and Brett Park. Okay?
Lower Brett Park.
Also, Brett Park had one of the largest battles in the Revolutionary War fought there. It is a Revolutionary War memorial. It is, as Kevin Wright has said on numerous occasions, it was where America was born. So I think it is not an appropriate site for this memorial to be constructed in that park. I would be more than happy, as I know other people on the Greenway Board, to work with the Holocaust Commission to find an appropriate site, which we think would make sense. I would suggest that that group get a hold I would suggest that that group get a hold of this state resolution before going ahead and spending time and energy and money involved in something which might never come to fruition. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am in the front?
When I saw the headline in the Jewish Standard, Brett Park Proposed for Holocaust Memorial, I was taken aback. I thought a similar proposal had been discussed and defeated last year. So, I began thinking, why is this group asking for park space again? Is it for education? If so, multiple area religious institutions and schools teach in their curriculum about the Holocaust in all the time. Survivors and their families will never forget. In fact, the scars can last generations. This is not a town of Holocaust deniers. We are well informed about what happened in Nazi Germany in the 1930s, and we are a guest at Man's Inhumanity to Man. This is not a need for education that we have in Teaneck. However, if the purpose, as some say, is to prevent hate and intolerance, there might be more effective means than a monument to achieve this. To fight hate and intolerance requires the sympathy and empathy of others. It requires respect for everyone's rights. This is a diverse town. Residents are of many colors and from many countries, and they remember their own history. Unfortunately, there have been many other atrocities in our times. A memorial to only one group in town on public land might well be viewed differently than the sponsors hope. But, if there must be a memorial, please, not in a public park. The parks belong to the entire community. Brett Park is a green acre site, quote, "dedicated to permanent recreation and open space by the state of New Jersey," end quote. That's on a sign Brett Park, right there. People come to parks to rest and find solace in nature. Children come to play in a beautiful outdoor setting. This is not where you teach a child about genocide. In addition, this request could be a dangerous precedent, and other groups could rightly claim parkland for monuments to their martyrs. And for these reasons, I respectfully ask the council to deny the request for this monument in Brett Park. I seem to think that there are other places, private places, that are not public, or perhaps in the municipal place that Dr. Pruitt described, or others similar to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir in the back?
Thank you. I'm Harold Steinbach. I've been a Teaneck resident for 28 years. I'd like to speak on behalf of the Teaneck Holocaust Council's proposal, and in favor of it. So, Teaneck is a unique town. Not only is it a town that, where a huge number of survivors' descendants live, it's a town where a huge number of veterans that rescued the survivors live. And this monument will be a tribute to the veterans and the United States as well. New Jersey's always been a leader in Holocaust education. It's the first state to mandate Holocaust education. And Teaneck has always been a leader. The Teaneck, which is the first town to voluntarily integrate in this country, should be a leader and have the first Holocaust memorial in Bergen County. There's lots of precedent for having public memorials, I mean, memorials on public space. If you go to the Bergen County Courthouse, they have memorials for all kinds of groups. The Armenian genocide, the Irish victims of English policy and the potato famine. There's now going to be a monument to the Korean Comfort Women. There's a great history of monuments on public places. They benefit us all. I'm a bike rider. I frequently stop in Bergen County and South New York State and look at the different monuments they have. They have, they're two World War I, other wars, 9/11. It's a very meaningful way to spend a few minutes and reflect and appreciate what we have in this country. I think that having a place, a beautiful memorial, believe me, kids that don't want to know about it, they'll be playing ball. Kids are kids. Whoever wants to know about it or look and read it, it'll be a nice place for people to go and meditate and reflect. It will benefit every citizen of Teaneck. And it's finally, I don't think anyone's disgusted, but it's my understanding that this monument will be paid for with private funds. So, in this day and age of deficits, we're talking about private citizens putting out money to create something that will benefit the entire town. I think it's something that's very important for the town, and we could fight all day long about, should it be this high, or this long, or this far from the river? You know, I love, I love, you know, the river, and I walk on the path all the time, but we can make a million excuses. This is the right thing to do, and we should do it now. I'm Harold Steinbach. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am? No. You come on up. I was calling on her, but you got up.
It's okay.
I'll get you next one.
Sorry about that. Jackie Greenrod, taxpayer and resident of Teaneck. I think the Holocaust Memorial is a very laudable project, and I'd like to see it go forward, but Brett Park is not the place for it. There is, first of all, not nothing going on in Brett Park. There's nature going on in Brett Park. There's a park going on in Brett Park. And it's meant for basically passive uses, and this is, from what I can tell from the project presentation, a very active use. I think the place for this project is right outside on the memorial, on the municipal green. It will be seen by many more people than it will be seen in Brett Park. And by the way, there's a lot of flooding in Brett Park. I don't know if anyone on this council has ever been to Brett Park cleaning it up after a massive flood, but I have been. It is not, it is, there should be no taking away of the arable land along our river more than has already been taken. So, I would, I sense there's a lot of support for this going into Brett Park on this council, but I would hope that you would reconsider that. The municipal green is the place for this monument memorial. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am? Yes.
Hi, good evening. My name is Rose Thorne. I'm the lady that wrote a letter to each and one of you before May 28. It referred to a tree that is overlapping the street. It has two branches. And I told you my story because, right now, my husband and I, we own a fixed income, and I cannot afford to physically or financially to cut the tree. I actually forgot to mention in the letter how the tree has this brown thing coming down. My husband parts in this tree so that in the event that this branch fall, it doesn't hurt anybody. Most of the time, I cannot sleep at night because I'm worried that this tree might hurt a child coming from school or someone coming from work. I don't know how more, how could I put it more, how important is to cut this tree. I wrote this letter back on May the 28th. The end of this week will be a month, and nothing has been done, with the exception of Mr. Pruitt. He had called me several times. I haven't heard from no one else. I'm a boarder of this town. I live in this town 30 years. I'm a registered nurse. I have worked in many hospitals. I have helped many, many people. So, when I wrote that letter, I expected one of you guys, even Senator Weinberg. I wrote to her also. I put her name in the letter, asking for help. I just need help cutting those branches and cutting the tree before, God forbid, it hurts someone. And that's the reason I'm here. I wanted to give a face to that letter that I wrote, because I felt that a person like me made a difference putting you all in your seats, so that maybe someday, if I needed a help, you'd be there to give me a helping hand. And that's why I'm here. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thorne. Can you tell what you said to get her contact information? Grab her contact information. Ms. Wilson?
Gwen Akry, Teaneck. I'm just here tonight to ask about the letter I got in the mail, well, we got in the mail, about, from the BCUA concerning them coming into your house to look at your plumbing, your sock pumps, if you have them, your roofs, and that kind of thing. But, I was asked about this before I got the letter from a neighbor who had had someone come into her house already. I don't think she let them inspect anything. I read this entire letter, and I read all of this. It sounds interesting. It sounds as if it's something that would be helpful to the environment, as well as all of us. My question is, after all this done, what is the end result? I mean, if there's something in my house that needs to be done, am I going to be responsible on the resident? It didn't explain that. I just need to know, what is the end result, and then I'll know whether I should send this in or not.
Anyone else? I'm sorry, Senator. Senator, did you have your hand up?
Ricky Shalan, Teaneck. It was just brought up. On the block that I live, on Club Road, right on the corner, somebody is growing a huge bush, and it grows every year, and it hides anything of the corner that you make a turn there. And I don't know which, who you go to to check these things out. On the corner of Golf and Club Road, the full stop sign is hidden. The woman on the corner has already had three cars landing on her, on her property. And I think it should be checked to make sure that people take care of their bushes and whatever, that they do not hide where you can make a turn. Also, on that East Cedar Lane corner, there's a place for people to park, and for you to make a left turn, okay, you have to go out onto Cedar Lane to make sure there's no cars coming. So, I think somebody should come by and check out that whole area before cars land on our property a little too much. Thank you.
Thank you. Alex?
First, I'll address this Jewish monument. The thing is that I recall when I was on Environmental Commission, we looked for different things, places and all stuff, and we found that, according to what the first person who spoke about that said, that it's under jurisdiction of the Ruben, just the Newbridge Road and all this historic, and all this, of this site. That's, well, basically, we cannot do anything there anyway. And my just thing is, my feeling is, please, okay, second time, when it was not verified whether it's possible to do something, but allowed or not, it's a lot of fuss, a lot of energy and activity, which was just basically, should not be done because it's not allowed, okay? So, the second thing is, we're allowed, we cannot, cannot build anything, apparently, from what I understood. Okay, now, the other thing is that the Business Association in Teaneck, they are talking not only Greenway, but about the tourism in Teaneck and the Stubborn Place, okay? And this is part of it, because it might be that there'll be some archaeological digging there, which will attract some people as a part of the whole complex, because they say that number, while they are poorly funded, okay, that the number of people who attend Stubborn House and all that is one of the highest in the country and certainly in New Jersey, okay? Therefore, you see, there is, there is a competition about the American Revolution historical site and the monument to the Holocaust, and I think they do not fit well, okay? That it's, again, probably not allowed because of Stubborn House stuff, okay? Again, when I was, you can say the number of things, I don't remember, and Lizette says something like that, too, Brett Park cannot be used for some, some other things. Exactly what the limitations, I don't know. Don't remember. Okay, so, and also, again, the putting in clash of Holocaust and American Revolution is not right. Again, if tourism, which is both, while the source of revenue, okay, and a center for attraction for Teaneck, and while just prominent for Teaneck, is not right, okay? The other things I want to talk about is that please vote against authorization of emergency temporary appropriation of over $50 million. This is dominant part of the entire 2014 budget. We don't have this budget adopted, and therefore do not know whether we will have money requests for each item in the temporary appropriation. Council's goal should be to freeze or reduce the budget, as Ridgewood and Englewood did. The residents should be able to afford living in Teaneck. Therefore, 2014 budget and within it, emergency temporary appropriation, resolution 1691, should pursue this major goal. Also, postpone was an option to cancel managers' appointments of two firefighters, as written effective June 18, 2014, as stated in the manager's report, AB. We do not have budget, and therefore do not know whether there is money for these appointments in it. To make appointments where he does not, does not have money approved for them is an inappropriate move, and while I support, for example, the suggestion by Eli Katz to freeze completely the hiring on empty spots. Therefore, this should be decided by new council, probably, and such, such appointments should not be approved right now, because, again, we don't have budget, we don't know whether we have money for that. That's probably close to $100,000 or $80,000 a year, and while it will be useful to cut into the budget and taxes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Senator Weinberg?
First of all, when I come here after the resolution presentation, it's as Loretta Weinberg, Teaneck resident. I noticed on your agenda tonight that you carry something called communications. I'd really appreciate knowing how you qualify to get your communication listed on the agenda. And let me go into a very long correspondence that I have had with each of you and with the town manager over something called your Parking Pilot Program, which apparently, in the latest exchange I just heard from the manager after going through several months of not getting a reply to my letter, don't feel you're alone.
Yes, I feel alone.
It happens to all of us. But I did get an email, and I was told, number one, the Parking Pilot Program was never actually voted by the council by resolution, it was just some kind of an agreement you reached. I was also told, after asking for many months, have you notified the permit holders? We each pay $55 for that permit per year. We each pay $55 for that permit per year in order to be able to park in the municipal parking lots over and above whatever the required time is. The lot next to my office, I think the time is four hours. I was finally told tonight, no, we never notified the permit holders because we put up signs in the parking lot. Well, I didn't even know I'm a permit holder, as are members of my staff that we all pay for. I didn't even know that you had permit parking in the other parking lot on Beverly Road or I'm not even sure where the Orchard Street parking lot is. So I'm sorry that I have to talk to you personally, but it's been like probably close to a year of correspondence over this. How do you set up permit parking for permit park, for permit holders and not notify them that there is permit parking in lots 1, 2, 3, or 4, wherever they're located? And what is the basis of your pilot program and how can you ticket anybody who's parked in these spots without a permit, without having had an ordinance passed? And I will tell you that somebody in my staff got a ticket, I'll take that up separately, under an ordinance that doesn't cover this, by the way. That's just an aside. So my question becomes, really, if I don't know that there's permit parking in the Beverly Road lot that I might choose to park in and use the permit that I pay for, how do you do a pilot study? So I would really appreciate at some point you're having a discussion about this. I know that you put in these two spots in this parking lot next to my office because we talked about the lack of parking in there. So I appreciate that step, but it's not really a step forward unless you do it appropriately. So I would appreciate finding out, because I don't think any communication I've ever sent actually ended up on the agenda. I might be wrong, but I don't think it has. And maybe if you carried communications on your agenda, things like this lady's letter might get some attention. That's my critical part. Now for the thank yous. First of all, thank you all for taking the time to honor some of our citizens in Teaneck. I think that's appropriate and time well spent. But personally, and I do have resolutions, which you will both get, to council member Yitz Stern to Deputy Mayor Adam Guston, I thank you for your service. Whether we agree or disagree on a whole variety of issues, I know what it's like to sit up there. I still know what it's like to try to get through the supermarket, which is why I order my groceries online most of the time now. Really, putting your names forth and spending the time to build and help this community is admirable. You deserve the thanks of all the citizens of the township of Teaneck and whatever it is you decide to do in the next phase of your lives. On behalf of myself as a resident here, I want to say thank you to both of you for your service to the township, for the hours you spent, the hours you spent away from your young family, the telephone calls. Again, I still remember having sat on this council. I used to dread snowstorms because my phone would ring off the hook. So on behalf of all of us, thank you for everything that you have done and you will continue to do. Thank you.
Guess I'll also mention I'm a member of the Teaneck Board of Education and one of my colleagues, Clara Williams, is here as well. Today I was a few minutes late to council and the reason for that is we had the graduation ceremony for Teaneck High School. Approximately 350 students graduated and these are some fine people. One of the things that I find really interesting is students who are graduating are honored in several ways. There's ceremonies for athletics, there's ceremonies for scholarships, and damn it, they're often the same people at both types of ceremonies. We have scholar athletes, so proud of them. We have members of our teams who are active, who are collegiate material going to fine schools throughout the United States. So I applaud them all and I congratulate them today and their families for their graduation. Second thing, it's to Yitz and to Adam and I too, thank you for your service. I, I know that a lot of times people say, at this level of government, it's politics. I prefer to think of things that are Teaneck in terms of electoral process, whether it be the Board of Education or the council, are not really politics. It's people who are public volunteers providing a service to their communities. So I thank you for your service. I saw on the agenda, different tack now, I'm sorry, items for council minutes being approved for a period, I believe, from January of 2014 through to date almost. And I'm wondering, are we back on track for what's happened in the past or is this in fact considered a timely process of the responsibility of transparency and providing these kind of minutes? And it may very well be. It may be that a half a year is normal. I, I tend to think that maybe a month is probably desirable, but maybe that will be clarified this evening. I'm going to talk about something that's more personal to me. I sent a letter to the council and to the manager regarding Cedar Lane. Now, I'm on a very flat area with my bookstore of Cedar Lane. It's almost the center part of Cedar Lane. And I sit in a chair in front of my store and from that vantage point, without moving my backside, I can turn my head and I can see approximately six, seven different areas with our orange cones because we have loss of trees, we have problems with the pavement, we have grading holes, grading holes above where the trees used to be. These are areas where I've seen people stumble. Thank God no one's had an ambulance. No, I'm sorry. I remember once an ambulance did come and the person refused service. Nevertheless, it's an eyesore. It's been years. We've had problems there that are ongoing, that have been reported, that have had orange cones for a couple of years now. Now, I do have to compliment our manager. I got a very quick response to my concern and I thank you for that, but there is a concern attached to that. The response was, we are aware of it, we have not set a date to correct this. Now, I'm going to badger for the future as an advocate for something I think is important. It's not just an eyesore, it is a very visible eyesore. Anyone traveling through Teaneck sees these cones all around. It, it's pretty incredible that it's been there for so long. We have a tree, it almost looks like it's a phony tree because it's silver colored for two years. It's never had a stitch of green on it for those two years. It's time for it to go, it's time for it to replace. When I hear the fact that we haven't replaced a different tree because it's a seasonal thing that has to be done at a certain point in time in the year, I figure we've probably passed that point twice in the two years that it's been a problem. So if it's seasonal, maybe you're thinking of a fifth season, not the four that we usually encounter. Get a definition on this. Let's see a calendar date on this kind of thing. Thank you for your time and listening.
Councilman Stern, Councilman Guston, on behalf of the Advisory Board on Community Relations, we want to say thank you for your service and we look forward for your continued support and for, we have openings on our advisory board. Thank you.
I'll try not to hold out of this and see if I can keep it from popping out. My name's Chuck Powers, I'm a resident of Teaneck. It, it strikes me as rather extraordinary that we've gotten to 10:20 at night without any mention of the fact that, wow, this township has things like the TIFF, people like Genevieve Mayberger, who are incredible opponents of things that make this township great. We have a township council which received a letter, I don't know if you've actually received yours, sort of the manager has received yours and you folks have received it and also the manager's response suggesting that it is your fault and in fact, we don't have a budget. And this is not a happy letter. This letter talks about the fact that the township is in gross non-compliance with one of your basic duties. It goes on to say that not having passed a budget on time, delay causes damage to your financial reputation among those who rate and buy short and long-term debt. Delay causes a needless issuance of estimated tax bills and goes on to talk about the duplication that's therefore involved in that process. Delay reduces your options to achieve a balanced budget. Delay lessens your constituents and taxpayers' ability to meaningfully participate in the budget process. In the meeting after the election, Ellie Katz suggested, I have the whole, that whole quote, that, I'm not going to rush into this to get, to just to get it closed, I'd like to do this right. So I'm going to be supporting reviewing the budget when we have these two new council members who've been talking about the budget. But in fact, you're not going to be able to do that because the state tells you that this township begins to receive fines if it doesn't pass the budget within 23 days of the time that you bring a new council on. And you must begin the entire process, introducing, sending a budget off to the state and then finally passing a budget. It's going to be September, almost no matter what, and at least you had the, the good sense tonight to say, I'm not going to start passing bond issues when I haven't got any idea what my 2014 budget is. And you did that really on advice, I hope, of, of Councilman, Councilman Pruitt. We are really in very deep trouble. And Mr. Guston's laughter about a matter as this was your financial responsibility for five months, now six, you have sat there and had discourse and said, I can't go ahead without revenue projections and not having had, not having had an, an annual financial statement in until 99 days after it was supposed to be there. You've passed all of your deadlines and your state tells you you're in gross non-compliance and about ready to start receiving serious fines. And you folks have pretended throughout this process that it really didn't matter. And the state told you in this document very specifically why it matters. We will not come out of this year, no matter how good these new people are, with anything like a well-considered budget in which the public participates. And this state thinks that that's inappropriate, so much inappropriate, that it's going to begin to fine you on the 23rd of July. I am very disappointed that, and I think that's, I actually believe the mayor is as disappointed as, as I am about this because when, when, when Mark Schwartz suggested, we can let this thing go until after the election, the mayor said, no, 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 we shouldn't be doing that. But somehow you folks conspired to allow this budget not to get passed and we're going to have nine months of activity without your guidance as to what it is we should be spending. And I'm really sorry about that and I don't think anybody who's participated in making that happen has any business representing me. Thank you.
Have you spoken already, so Keith? Keith Kaplan, Teaneck resident. Had one question regarding Cedar Lane. I noticed that there are police at the crosswalks in the morning. I was just wondering if that's typical, if we usually have crosswalkers, the kind we see in the rest of the town, or if police have always handled that function? Speaking of police, I was speaking with Acting Chief Carney. I'm under no impression that privacy is anything but a dead relic from the NSA on down, but I did notice many of the police cars have license plate readers on them. In light of, two circuit courts now have embraced the mosaic theory and really in short, it just says that any single point doesn't tell you much about a person, but as you start gathering data, it tells you a lot about a person's lifespan. When these things record the license plate of every car and every driveway in Teaneck, when it records, when you're in your lover's home, when it records, when you go to your synagogue, when you, woman goes to the mikva, when a Muslim goes to services, when someone goes to confession, these, when you go to a psychiatrist, these things add data. And the ACLU goes and says that they suggest that these things are useful. They actually help, you know, prevent crimes. Teaneck's actually used them and given out tickets for cars. And they suggest that they be kept for days or at the most weeks. New Jersey requires that they are kept for five years, which keeps quite a lot of data on the citizens of Teaneck. And I just want to make sure that this town and the police going forward understand how much of a privacy invasion that could be, especially in light of many towns in New Jersey that have had problems with, well, incompetence and dereliction of duty among police officers inappropriately using data. Just leave it at that. As far as the Holocaust memorial, sitting in the back, you know, I've never heard so much disagreement among people that seem to all agree about an idea being a great idea. And it seems to come down a lot to priorities. Some of the priorities that people have been talking about are much better than others. Quite frankly, the considerations about the people that, you know, were indigenous to the area, I think are extremely important. I think those need to be hashed out. I think that some of them, dealing with those that, you know, anybody who might want to come up. Dr. Pruitt, with all due respect, I think if somebody comes to you and says that 5 million people, 6 million people, 10 million people were slaughtered, we should be embracing the fact that someone cares enough to go and bring a memorial and engaging with them to pick another place in town or even on the municipal green to have their memorial as well. I don't think that, you know, a lot of the objections that were raised, the fact that it's a place for contemplation, this is absolutely the type of contemplation that we should have in public places. And I've seen, you know, even, there was a story of a Jewish school who were mostly Spartic Jews, who didn't have relatives that perished in the Holocaust, who were mostly of Ashkenazic descent, and they didn't know about Holocaust education. We're talking into the 90s until they developed a curriculum after someone, you know, through pure ignorance said, Happy Holocaust, you know, Memorial Day. And, you know, the, the education that we give in Teaneck High School, and I've seen the programs that they put on, and if anyone has not been there, they should go every single year. They bring these survivors and it's very moving, but these survivors are dying. And if you don't want it talked about, the way we talk about World War I as a historical event, it needs to be more than just something that's taught in the classroom, it needs to be something you encounter. So I'll leave it at that. I wanted, you know, before they go to call out Councilman Stern, Councilman Guston, I met you folks when I moved into town, I believe, seven or eight years ago. And the Athenian oath that you take says to leave the town better off than when you got here. And, you know, between the various programs and places around town that you've put forward, I hope you've done just that and wanted to thank you for your service.
Ken Hoffman, New Jersey. Having missed the last two meetings, I think thankfully because we were on a large family vacation, I do want to congratulate Jason and Alan, who's not here, on their election. And I also wish to thank, as everyone will be doing, Yitz and Adam for your service and congratulations to Lizette and Ellie on your reelection and I look forward to working with you whether up on the dais or sitting with us in the back, drinking Diet Cokes and listening to the discussion. I do want to thank the council- I do want to thank the council for referring the Holocaust to our PPRAB meeting, it means that our summer will be meaningful, because I do believe this is a serious topic that needs the type of discussion and input that our committee, or our advisory board, rather, excuse me, has, and I think we will come up with some suggestions that everyone can then discuss and move forward. I do also want to talk a little bit about ordinance 20 that was passed, which is with the Voty Sportsplex, how could I not talk about it? But more importantly, as the budgeting is going to be, I guess revisited, I was away, so I guess from what Dr. Powers has said, still has not been passed, the issue that you've passed needs enforcement. And when you look at what we are requesting the teams who play there do and follow the rules, we are going to need some body, some person to watch that and deal with also with the cleanup. It's a very explicit listing of what can and cannot be done on that, to maintain the synthetic turf surface, and by doing it on an honor system will only lead to trouble. So I strongly recommend that the future council look into having somebody there, particularly in the evening, and maybe even on weekends, when we're going to be having lots of individuals playing there. Right now, TNEC Junior Soccer League's registration, which just closed, is approximately 18% higher than last year, probably due to the sportsplex, we are looking at, probably in the neighborhood of 900 to 1,000 children, rather than 800 playing soccer on the weekend. TNEC Junior Football will be busy on Friday nights and Saturdays, we're going to need people there, and I would hope that you would look into it. Finally, I did want to once again thank the council for all of their help, for all the citizens, and I look forward to working with you over the next few years. Thank you.
Natalie Addison, and I live on Voorhees Street. I don't know if the council can do anything, but I live on Voorhees Street, from TNEC Road, there's a bus stop there. Cars come and park on the street from in the morning until the evening. It's a public street, I understand that, that's fine, but my concern is, I'm scheduled for street cleaning on Thursday. Public works cannot clean the street, and I have cars, I make sure in the front of my property, I make sure the cars are off in the front of my house and in the driveway. But now I've gotten to the point that anyone that parks in the front of my house on the property, I leave them a note to tell them, please do not park in the front of my house on Thursday, because that's when they're scheduled for street cleaning. I don't know what you're going to do, but I think it's something that needs to be addressed, because I'm a taxpayer, and we're having public work working, and they cannot do their job because cars are parked there. Other people, if they don't want it, but that's the step I've taken, I'm leaving a note on their car to tell them, please do not park in the front of my house or the property in the front of my house, so I can get my street, if I can get the street cleaned in the front of my house. So I don't know what you can do, but we need to do something, really, so thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Oh, Jason? I'm sorry.
Jason Castle, TNEC resident. First and foremost, there are a lot of people honored tonight, so I want to extend congratulations to all those who were honored this evening. I'd like to extend a thank you to Deputy Mayor Gussen and Councilman Stern for your years of dedicated service. I said it before, you know, regardless of the politics, I commend you for putting your names forward and serving your community honorably. My tour of TNEC has continued, the education has continued. Over the past couple of days, I've had a tremendous opportunity to view our court system at work. I thought it was amazing to see the judge FaceTime with someone who was in a holding cell, and that there was equal representation for the people, not just here in court physically, but that they were leveraging technology to give everyone a fair shake. I got a chance to go on a ride along with TVAC yesterday, and that was absolutely amazing, to get in the rig and go out to a five-star retirement community. It was a very comical ride along, you know, the couples who have been married for so many years have a sense of humor about them. And when we first walked in, the wife said, I'm happy you're here to get my idiot off the floor. And, you know, it was just this degree of levity that was so very funny, and, you know, as TVAC was helping this gentleman, you know, with courtesy and professionalism, she says, make sure you don't fall again, and he's like, he's got a pain in his leg, and he says, the pain is not in my leg, it's in another part of my body. And I thought, you know, just to be able to witness that, but to also witness those residents say, we appreciate your service, we appreciate your volunteerism, and the check is in the mail. You know, there aren't enough residents that know that TVAC is completely volunteer, and that the service they provide is amazing, so the couple hours I spent with them were ones I won't forget. I wanted to volunteer for TVAC after that. I got a chance to spend a great deal of time with our township attorney today, and to really just understand the way in which the legal process works here in town, to understand what his role and his job and his responsibilities are, the guidance that he offers to the township, but also to hear just areas where there could be improvement. That was great. I want to congratulate our high school students who graduated today. You know, it's yet another step, yet another accomplishment, and hopefully a long educational career, so congratulations to them. There were two concerns I did want to bring up. One concern came, I was at Juneteenth this past weekend, and there were some food trucks there, and there was an ice cream truck, and I went over to the ice cream truck to get my daughter some ice cream, and I asked him if he was a, you know, if he ever drove around TNEC. And he said that he doesn't drive around TNEC because he believes that there's an ordinance that prevents him from playing his music. And I thought, that can't be, I hope not. I mean, I remember my childhood here in the ice cream truck and running to the truck, and that was the, you know, the impetus for me to ask my mother for a dollar to get an ice cream, so I don't know if there is an ordinance that prevents the ice cream man from playing his music, but that will definitely be something I'm going to look at as a councilman. The other concern I had is that there's a new business here in TNEC by the name of Seize Savannas. They're on Queen Anne Road, they're right next to Vitale's. And they had expressed a concern that they've been waiting on a sign to be approved since January. And I know that there have been a number of things that have happened, but they are a business in town, and they have no identity, because there's no sign in front of their business, and they haven't been provided any guidance. So I know it's not the duty of the council, but I just wanted to bring it up in public form to make you all aware. And with that, thank you very much.
Anyone else? Mr. Fox?
I just want to address some of the comments that were made after the presentation.
Mr. Fox, if you could just address council, just address the council.
Oh, okay. I just want to address some of the comments that were made after the presentation. First of all, as I pointed out, in 1975, there was a plan to make an elaborate resort in Brett Park with space for 72 cars, with a restaurant, with ballfields. So the other thing is, I didn't go through the whole history, but when the township took over Brett Park, there were a number of structures there already, there was a campground there, there were a number of cabins that the township ripped down when it took over the park. If you say that parks are just for being parks, then there will be no Lincoln Memorial, Washington Memorial, Martin Luther King Memorial, World War II memorials anywhere, because 99.9% of them are on public lands and they're in parks. And there are parks for a reason, because it's a place for people to come and recognize those events and pay homage to those people who sacrificed so that we, in the United States, have a better life. So we are happy that there was some very good discussion about the memorial. This is something you had before we started awards for activism. Our activism is to do something really positive for this town, and I believe that when this becomes, hopefully comes to fruition, we will all look back and say, look what a beautiful thing we did for our town. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sir?
Yes. My name is Leo Schneider, I'm a resident of TNEC since 1977. I'm perplexed and saddened by Mr. Fox's persistent, apparently persistent endeavors to have a memorial park in that particular place. First of all, if you look at a map, which I have, it's tucked away, and Mr. Fox was interviewed in the newspaper, he said he doesn't mind on private land, because it'll be tucked away and people will only come once a year. Well, he makes an assumption, which I don't know what he backs up on, who's to say this Brett Park is tucked away in the furthest corner of TNEC. Its accessibility is, to my knowledge, not easy to get to. It's on a major traffic highway, River Road, which could be a danger to anyone wishing to arrive there or leave there. Secondly, if a stranger walked into this room this evening, he'd be puzzled in thinking that there's nothing in TNEC that commemorates or memorializes the Holocaust, which is nothing, which is further from the truth. TNEC was the first community through TNEC High School, which still exists, that has a Holocaust center. It's open all year long, whether it's raining, or snowing, or hot, or cold, which you can't say the same in Brett Park. TNEC also has an annual commemoration of the Holocaust. There is a Holocaust plaque, my understanding, in the Arkansas Courthouse, which isn't far from here. Councilman, the state of New Jersey has ongoing memories of the Holocaust. We have the honor to have Councilman Stern, a member of the New Jersey Holocaust Commission. Is that correct, Councilman? This is just in TNEC and its environs about the Holocaust. I think Mr. Fox means well, but in my view, if he persists and pursues this, he diminishes, in my view, the memory, the meaning of the Holocaust, a terrible, horrible event. Now, beyond just in the shadow of TNEC, there's a beautiful, ongoing memorial at Battery Park. I've been there, it's very moving. And just go to Washington DC, and there's a Holocaust Commission Memorial. People walk in there, dry-eyed, but no one leaves without having tears in their eyes. Now, if you want a memory, as far as I'm concerned, it involves the heart and the mind and the soul, and that's a personal thing. I don't have to go to a Brett Park or to any other park for memories of the Holocaust. So it's not that nothing exists and ongoing. I don't know what he endeavors. The moment he brought this up, it created a controversy, which that alone should be paused about going and persisting with this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Clara?
Good evening, Clara Williams. I just wanted to first thank you, Stern and Adam Gussen, for their years of service. It's not an easy thing, and, you know, we've often been on different sides of the issues, and I could, but I can certainly appreciate what it takes to be a public servant. And I also, I didn't have an opportunity to congratulate Lizette and Ellie for their reelection, and I'm looking forward to the new council. One of the points I'd like to make about what you guys have done with the budget is, I think that's kind of a stinky thing you've done, as far as leaving it for the new council to come and start to handle it. I mean, it really is, or was, your responsibility, and to leave our township in that state is really unconscionable. So, and then, being, having been public servants for as long as you have, you know that it takes some time to get oriented to the whole process, to the whole structure, and, you know, to throw that on them when it was really your responsibility, was, is really kind of unfair. So I just wanted to let you know that although I do appreciate, and I really didn't want to have to say this to you, I think that the public should understand that, you know, you didn't handle this the right way. The other thing I have a question about is the emergency temporary appropriation, and perhaps Mr. Turrets can explain it to me and the public. If this is not passed this evening, and I hope you haven't just lost your mind, but if it's not passed, what state does that put the township of TNEC in? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Naomi?
Naomi, TNEC, Naomi Kramer, TNEC. I know we haven't always agreed on many, many, many things, but I do appreciate the time that it does take away from your family life. And for Councilman Stern, I want to thank you for constantly acknowledging my crusade for workshop meetings. And for Councilman Gussen, for often giving really good explanations of issues when people have asked questions about complicated things. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? Gila?
I am not one for public speaking, but I really feel that I have to come up here and just say that the majority of people that stand in front of this microphone bash you about something or other, and I wanted to thank you all for your service, because I know it's a 24-hour day thing, and you really don't get the proper acknowledgement for what you do.
Anyone else? Seeing no other hands, Goodwill Fair is now closed. I was told that, I wasn't at the last meeting on Mr. Thorne's issue, we have DPW going out and measuring to see if, do we have a resolution on her?
On Mrs. Thorne's issue, I personally visited that location, I believe it was on Wednesday, the 18th, I visited that location with the DPW director and Councilman Pruitt, and I spoke to Mrs. Thorne as well about the issue. It's not a township tree, the branch does present a hazard, and I told her that we're going to deal with that hazard if she doesn't deal with the hazard because it's her tree.
Okay, thank you. And Ms. Addison here is also a new face that I just wanted to talk to. The parking issues that you have, you're very lucky that you have a councilman that sits on your street, on Voorhees Street and the Voorhees Block Association. So one of the things that we usually have when we deal with these commuter issues, if the block comes up with a petition, then we start looking at different ways to solve this problem. So I think if I were, my suggestion would be to contact Dr. Pruitt, talk to people in the block, and see if there's a, what does consensus in, bring forward a petition, and then we will make, take the appropriate action. So I think that that's usually the way that we move forward with. I'm going to hold off, no, actually I'm not, you know, it's interesting that the Holocaust Memorial is, there's debate in it, and for me... And for me, it's a very, I kind of look at it from a very personal issue. You know, there's a mosque being, trying to be built in Midland Park, and the reaction always is, half the community says, you know, because there's opposition now, because, you know, we don't know what kind of people are going to be moving in next to this, and who are these people? And, you know, half the community says, no, we shouldn't build one, and half the community says, of course, we should build one and fight for one. And it seems like always the same issue when you come up with a Holocaust memorial, is that people shy away from talking about it, or they say, you know, like, why should it only be the Holocaust? And there are people who always advocate for it. And that's from an outsider's perspective of the Jewish community and the Jewish community of Teaneck. And I look at this and I say that, you know, there are a lot of things that the Jewish community did for me that I don't even, that people don't understand, you know? Like, I pray five times a day. I leave, you know, or my family leaves work on Friday for religious services, and the religious accommodations that were fought in those battles that were fought and religious accommodations in the workplace were fought by the Jewish community, and I appreciate that. And if you look at the situation with the mosque in Midland Park, you know, the landmark cases that went to the Supreme Court were all religious land use protection ads, Arlo Pus, even the last one, I think. Councilman Stern taught me about it when I was on the planning board, it was in Long Island, that went to the State Supreme, I mean, the US Supreme Court. So this debate is healthy, and nothing is done as far as Brett Park, but I think that we should have something to honor, I mean, not to honor, I mean, just to remember the, excuse me for misspeaking, but to remember the Holocaust. And I think it's important that Teaneck, as usual, lead the way on those things. And some people are not going to like it, and some people are going to be uncomfortable about it, but I'm firmly committed to moving forward with that. Just some other, and that was that, budget issues and Senator Weinberg's issue with the communication. I think, you know, I apologize that the communications go back and forth. You know, I think that sometimes we send communications your way, and we don't get it back either. But we haven't heard, I mean, I didn't get a response back on the interest-arcation, you know, 2% resolution that we passed over. So I think that, you know, sometimes in important issues, I was in tax issue, but I understand you're very busy, and your office is very busy, and, you know, these things happen back and forth. But regarding this issue, Mr. Manager, if you would just, or, I don't know.
I'd like to address it if you don't mind. All right. First of all, I take full blame and responsibility for the issue, and I don't want to pass it on to the manager, make it his fault. I feel awful seeing this correspondence back and forth, and I'm not just apologizing because I want the correspondence to stop, but let me tell you about the process. Listen, this came up, we got an email from Senator Weinberg's office to the council, and it was a very valid, what seemed like a concern. Merchants are paying good money to buy these merchant stickers, but in certain areas, they don't have a place to park. They can't park with these merchant stickers on Cedar Lane. That's, the purpose is to put them in the lots and to extend the hours of the lots. And it just seemed, you know, I know that the senator's office every year does buy these merchant stickers, and it seemed like a very valid concern. I brought that concern to the next council meeting, and I've spoken about it publicly to the council. It was at that council meeting that the council instructed the manager and myself, because I'm also a merchant, to sit down, come up with a solution, figure it out. We sat down the next day or two with the manager. He tried to figure out how to take the bureaucracy out of this process and try to address the needs of a merchant, a very important merchant, and I don't say that, and the reality is we're, it's a real honor to have the senator's office here in Teaneck, you know? And I'll tell you, when Pascal opened up his office in Englewood, I was kind of jealous of the fact that they, that he moved to Englewood, and I was hoping that maybe that we can get it. But it is, it is real good to have the senator's office here in Teaneck. So we came up with some type of solution, and we focused it on the entire town. We said, let's take a few of these lots, let's take this concept of reserving one or two spots. Now, there happens to be that the lot that's next to hers is, next to the senator's office is very, very jam-packed all the time. I mean, it really is. It's probably, I want to say it's the busiest lot, but it's the smallest of the busiest lots, you know? So it's always, probably almost always occupied. Let's take two or three of these locations, and let's create a pilot, and let's see how this works. Let's get, let's get the response both from the residents and from the merchants. We brought this back to the council. I reported on it to the council. Council gave the manager the green light. So as far as transparency and doing this in front of the community, it was all done up here. After, and I believe I notified Loretta or Senator Weinberg by email during certain points of this, you know, because we were concerned of her, we were concerned about her concerns. Afterwards, she brought up some of the process issues that were potential concerns of hers, notice, which we did give notice because it was actually, I mean, it was actually after the time that people usually came in to purchase their merchant stickers, which was the beginning of the year because they're good for one year, and a few other concerns that she's brought up that are valid. You know what? The toothpaste is out of the tube at this point. We expedited this process. I pushed it, the council supported it, to try to address the needs of a very important merchant, but also find a solution universally for the entire town. I don't know what to do at this point in order to fix that. I would like to still see that this pilot is a success. I would like to still see that the process is now, I guess, corrected where we can, but I don't want to keep blaming the manager for something that he did to try to help not just your office, all the merchants, because all the merchants pay good money, and we want to encourage. Listen, we'll lose money as a township if merchants feel that they're buying a merchant sticker and they don't have a place to park, or they get tickets for parking on the street. So that's the process that we went through. I'll certainly reach out to our senator's office, and I'll sit back down with the manager and see if we can correct whatever it is or address some of her items of concern. But that is the full intention, and that is why we did what we did and we got what we done. I thought it was a real positive thing. Unfortunately, maybe, you know, certain things have to be addressed, and we'll correct it. So I would like the request of the council, appoint me again, sit down unofficially with the manager, reach out to the senator's office, and let's see if we can make this good program even better for the entire town. Fair?
Yeah. Yes? Okay. So I just want, Mickey, we'll take a look at that site triangle issue over on Club Road for you, and the police will get back to us. And then there was also.
Cones on Cedar Lane?
Cones on Cedar Lane, and also the BCUA letter. They are, the homeowner is responsible for anything that happens.
Well, BCUA came several years ago. They probably came about two years ago. In their initial program, they talked about funding repairs. When they came back this year, they weren't talking about funding repairs. That was, that was kind of absent. But, you know, the intent of the program is to reduce the amount of clean water infiltration or stormwater infiltration into the sanitary sewer system. So that's the way they kind of left it.
We pay for it.
We pay for it.
When groundwater and stormwater get into the sanitary sewer system, it's clean water that gets then sent to BCUA to be cleaned. And ultimately, we pay for the effluent that leaves Teaneck to go to water treatment. And so if we have the ability to identify areas where groundwater and stormwater is leaking into our stormwater runoff syst, I mean, our sanitary sewer system, ultimately, our bill, which is a pretty significant line item every year in the budget from the BCUA, can be brought under control because we'll be asking them to clean less clean water.
Let me respond to that because they came in my house, about six of them. I mean, I don't know about their budget, but they had, they were looking for one thing, whether or not your sump pump was attached to the sewer line. They were not concerned about mostly anything else. They were concerned about water getting from your roof drains into the sewer line, not the storm drain. Their whole concern is how much water goes from your house into the sewer line, because that's what we pay for. We don't pay for the money for the water that goes into the storm drain.
No, no. And rainwater runoff should go into the storm drain. When you run your sump pump because the water table rises because we had a lot of rain, and you dump it into the sanitary sewer system, you're asking BCUA to charge us to clean clean water. That's the problem.
Thank you. Keith, I really do appreciate your big brother comments. You know, there's actually going to be, look out for Greenwall's new article next, this week about, you know, how many people were spied on by the NSA. Regardless, I have no solutions about the, I have no solutions right now about the license plate reader. But to your, I mean, look, I know somebody who was pulled over at gunpoint because they said it was a stolen car, and it turned out that it wasn't a stolen car. And this is a very big problem that's, that I believe that needs to be addressed in some way. So I think, thank you for pointing that out. Is there anyone else on council who would like to address anything?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, just the cones on Cedar Lane, that issue. We have several trees on Cedar Lane that are dying or dead. We have several areas where the initial grates that were put in, they're very thin, they're rusting, and we, you know, I visited the area with the engineer recently and Public Works Director, and we're looking for a solution, and we're not going to replace it with the same grates that are there, these thin grates. We're going to try to put some sort of standard-sized grate in there, but it's going to require some construction. Also, the trees, we're trying to determine the appropriate tree to replace the dead trees with. I have merchants calling me and requesting that we don't replace the trees because the merchants are concerned that the trees are blocking their signs and blocking their businesses, and there's a couple of trees they want cut down right now. So it's a dilemma, and we'll be working with Cedar Lane Management Group to try to arrive at some sort of solution. But in the interim, those cones are there so that no one trips and falls over that area, and one person has.
Thank you. Dr. Pruitt?
I have to go back to the Holocaust. We have a responsibility up here to be concerned about all the atrocities that have happened to all the people who may have so in Teaneck. And how we handle each one determines how we will have to handle the next one. And I don't want to, you know, say how many million people have to be killed to have a useful or relevant atrocity addressed. But my point is that once we begin to give parkland to these kinds of uses, we will have to be prepared to give parkland to these kinds of uses when somebody comes forward. You can't say, you know, you gave it to them, you have to give it to me. Now, we're fortunate in one sense. A past council determined that this property here is hallowed ground. So there are several memorials around the municipal building, and it's a place where we don't have to have that kind of battle because it's already been won. And I don't, I don't think, I want to say anymore, because whenever you talk about certain subjects, people who don't want to understand what you said don't understand what you said. Our job is to make sure there's fairness all the way across, and that later on, when the next group comes forward, we deal with it the same way. Now, budget. I'm astounded that we're at that place that we are. And I got to tell you, a month ago, I tried to get four people to call for a special meeting to introduce a budget. I know Jason and Alan are wonderful people, but they are not magicians. Nobody is going to be able to reduce a budget in the 10th month when they get to really play with it. We, we're in a situation that is just unbelievable for us to be in, and I hope that we can get it corrected. I hope Jason and Alan are really smart folks, and in July they'll come up with something that works. Nobody here wants to cut services, nobody in the township or in the council. But at the, at the seventh or eighth month, how do you make an adjustment? The money's been spent, and I'm very disappointed in my colleagues that we're where we are. Well, we're there, so we have to do the best we can, and I hope that Mr. Castle and Mr. Sohn have discovered something really important that we can do something with. But I doubt if it's going to have an impact in the ninth or 10th or 11th month.
Anyone else? Anyone? Yes?
I have just a couple items. First off, to Loretta, to Howard Rose, to Pat White, to everyone who thanked me for my service, I appreciate it. I know we certainly, we certainly always haven't agreed, but many of us have had the ability to disagree agreeably, and I think that's the cornerstone of leadership. And I want to let you know how much it, how much it means to me to hear your kind words and praise. Couple, couple things that kind of concern me, and maybe there's a common thread about the opposition or concern about the Holocaust memorial, and just a few, a few things that just, some things that just struck me as, as really concerning. Ms. Mousner said there's no need for education about the Holocaust. And then she said, people come to parks to play or rest. Well, I think, you know, it's funny, often I see Art Vasquez in Sagamore Park, and Art Vasquez likes to go to the park to rest and read books. There's one tree he likes to sit under in Sagamore Park, and he goes there to, he goes there to sit under the tree to rest. My kids go to use the playground equipment, and there's one park bench there that I like to go with a couple of my buddies, and we play board games. To put forth the idea that there's one or two reasons, or that Ms. Mousner knows the reason why everyone goes to every park is absurd. And the idea that it's not appropriate to go to a park to have meaningful reflection and thought surrounded by nature when we're not sort of crowded by the world around us to be able to clear our, to clear our mind and be able to reflect about things that are, that are greater than ourselves, to me, that's one of the unique things that a park offers us. And so it's something that I think is entirely appropriate and fitting, and certainly not precedent-setting or groundbreaking, as there's memorials in parks in virtually every municipality, county, state entity in the entire country. Whether it's the Veterans Memorial in Veterans Park in Teaneck, or Memorial to the Revolutionary War in Colonial Park in Teaneck, which I think is a fitting place to note the significance of New Bridge Landing and Washington's Retreat, which we already dedicate as such. When we look at the use of Brett Park, historic New Bridge Landing, I believe it specifically speaks about lower Brett Park and not upper Brett Park. Brett Park's fairly sizable, and there are different sections with different concerns, sensitivities, and encumbrances. So I think we can't simply paint with a, with a single brush all of Brett Park as being a single use or a single need. And then some concerns about the, about the budgeting process, I have to tell you, whether it's Mr. Powers who thinks it's extraordinary and our gross noncompliance with the budget, or Ms. Williams who said it was unconscionable, I agree. And since January, I've tried to work with my colleagues to put forth meaningful reductions in our budget, to no avail. There was no, there was no agreement in reducing the head count in our police or fire department. There was no agreement in trimming back significant public services. There was no agreement in trimming back significant public services. There was no agreement on anything that would have materially changed the way we provide municipal services. And so when Dr. Pruitt called me, and he did, to ask if I would be willing to, to set a special meeting to go over the budget back in, back in May, my answer was absolutely. I said, but I expect you to come to the table with, with proposals for budget reductions. And I'll come to that meeting if you come to the table with budget reductions. Well, that was the last I heard from Dr. Pruitt. He wanted to have a special meeting, but he didn't actually want to talk about anything significant.
Adam, the after, I couldn't get the fourth person. That's why we didn't have any.
Not even, not even a single call, hey, you know what? Help me get the fourth person, here's what I want to cut.
Don't lie unless you want to back it up.
I never got, I never got another call.
I only got three.
And if you had put forth, if you had put forth some suggestions about cuts, maybe I could have helped you get that fourth person. But the other line of the phone never rang. And so it's, it's important to understand that I'm just as disappointed as everyone else is about the budget. It's, it's a travesty that we were so far past this deadline and it's the fault, I'll, I'll take some blame and there's a, you know, I think there's about a seventh of the blame to go around for everyone on this dais. We had an obligation to put forth the budget and we didn't get it done. And I'm willing to take my seventh of the blame. But I came to the table each step of the way with suggestions, with, with real, real suggestions to stay under cap and to reduce the taxpayer burden. And, and I'm, I'm sorry that the new council is going to have to jump in midstream with a limited amount of time to be able to not only get up to speed, but since so much of the temporary budget's been spent already, their options, their hands are tied. And I believe that we've set the new council up for failure. And it's, it is, it is a shame. There's no, there's no other way around it. And it's unfortunate, but that's the case. So, you know, all of the cuts that I've proposed or the suggestions that I've made to my colleagues, both on the dais and in, in, in private conversations, I asked the new members of council and the continuing members of council, by all means, please use me as a resource because I don't know what cuts you have, but there's things that, that I've been thinking about for the last eight months now going into this budget as to things that we need to do differently. And so please, please let, please understand that I make myself available to sit through the budget and go through it the, the way I did. If you want to take me up on that, great. If not, you know, I hope, I hope that there's, there's other, other plans that you have in place. And I think, the other question was on the crossing guards. I've noticed it as well, several locations where typically there's, there's school crossing guards. Over the last couple of weeks, it seems to have been manned by Teaneck Police. Is there, I'm sorry?
They're hiring crossing guards.
Did we lose, did we lose some mid-year? What, what happened with our crossing guards?
Usually the police, I mean, if it's normally manned by a crossing guard, if they're absent for some reason, police fill in. So, you know, it's the end of the year, it doesn't make sense and you're not going to be able to hire anybody for, you know.
A week.
A couple of weeks. Yeah, a week or so. So those are locations where the police have to, to fill the gap.
Now, is that an overtime duty or is that an officer from a patrol post?
It would really depend. It would depend on staffing. Probably in the daytime, it probably wouldn't be. I mean, on a, on a normal day tour, you probably would have more people. So it, it really depends.
All right.
Depends on the individual case and time.
Counselor, sir?
Yeah, I, I'm not going to talk about the budget. Don't worry. I just want to take this opportunity to thank the individuals who came up to the mic to thank Adam and myself for our service, particularly Senator Weinberg, thank you for coming out this evening and staying so late. The members of the Board of Ed, Mr. Castle, and, you know, other people, other members of the public, especially the last person who spoke, who really spoke quite well.
Good answer.
I just want to really, I didn't really prepare anything. I just want to thank my council colleagues for giving me the opportunity to serve with you guys. I want to thank the manager's office and the clerk's office for always being supportive of me. I know sometimes I, you know, I'm a little bit of a pain in the butt, but you got used to it and you did a good job getting used to it. I want to thank the attorney for always keeping me and the council on the, on the straight and narrow and always coming up with good solutions to sometimes complicated issues. You know, when I started this road in public service, when I joined the Board of Adjustment, it's 24 years now. And there, there's, we do it as Keith Kaplan said earlier, we take the Athenian oath to try to leave the town better than the way we found it. And I'd like to think that a little bit at a time, some years were better than others, some months were better than others, some council terms were, were better than others, that we have a better Teaneck now than we had 24 years ago. And I've been living in Teaneck for 34 years last month. My wife and I are not planning to move anywhere. At least I'm not. And, and, you know, I, I hope that I continue to have the opportunity to serve the town and its residents in other capacities. And I appreciate the support over the years. Thank you.
If we don't adopt a temporary budget, what would happen?
The town is only authorized to spend money if it has adopted a budget or it has authorized an emergency appropriation. You're not allowed to encumber expense without one of those two items being in place. Temporary budget is based upon a formula, but it's basically based upon the last approved budget that you cannot overexpend that last approved budget. It's my understanding through the manager's office that the last emergency appropriation funds are going to run out approximately, if not.
June 30th.
June 30th. So come July 1, you have salaries to pay, you have expenses that you automatically are going to encumber unless you're going to shut down this government. And that's something I would strongly recommend the council not to do and that it's crucial to pass the emergency budget before July 1st. I mean, I can't, I don't, I don't know, Mr. Manager, how long the funds in this emergency appropriation is going to be.
Thank you. I think we're going to be, we're all in agreement that it's going to pass tonight or maybe we'll have enough votes to fight. Is there anything else? Deputy Mayor Gustafson's not here, so I just want to thank him for his service again.
We were going to do it at the end when he came back in, so that's why I didn't say anything.
Got you. So I'll talk.
Can I keep going with the agenda?
And then get back to Goodwill, Phil? And then get back to him.
We have resolutions.
Yeah. I thought they were talking about me. Get used to it.
Why don't we continue on with the agenda?
And then go back?
Then go back, yeah.
All right. I just wanted to say one thing also, I was going to wrap up very quick. July 1, we will have a new council and we will have a new mayor and we will have a new deputy mayor. And I really hope that this room supports the seven people that still are up here. I really hope that you make them successful because it's not easy sitting up here and dealing with people when there are so many things in, in the day that you have to get through. And there are so many people that you have to try to, and there's people's lives at stake and that's what, you know, the seven of us come up here and do. And a lot of it is we need your help, your support and your encouragement to keep going because you're who we work for. And if, if you're honest, I really hope that you make the next mayor and the next deputy mayor and the next council very successful and really kind of police everything that's going on in this town and keep the people who are honest and the naysayers who say that the town has changed or the town is going in the wrong direction, to really kind of look at them in the eye and tell them, you know, I don't know what Teaneck you live in, but maybe you see the world that way. You know, because when I look at the world, I see the, look at the world full of hope and optimism. And there are people who only look at the world and see despair and what's wrong with it. And it's pretty much usually you look at those guys and, you know, it's kind of how they live their life in conflict and they don't know how to live life not in conflict. And they don't know how to enjoy what's, what's going on around them and look at what's good or good that's going on in this town. I've tried to filibuster till my colleague got back, but he's not coming back, so I guess we'll, we'll move on with the consent agenda and move on.
I'd like to move the consent agenda, which includes no raffles and the minutes from December 31st.
You have to pull this.
To June, January 7, 2014, February 4, 2014, February 11, 2014, February 18, 2014, March 4, 2014, March 4, 2014, March 18, 2014, March 18, 2014, April 1, 2014, April 1, 2014, April 29, 2014, April 29, 2014, May 20, 2014, May 20, 2014, June 10, 2014, June 10, 2014, and Resolutions 1 through 24 with the exception of pulling Resolutions 19, 20, 21, and 23.
Hold on one second. Just pull the minutes. Let's hold the minutes, hold it right on that piece of paper. Just pull the minutes on that.
Minutes okay.
Everything that's on that paper, yeah.
It says the minutes are okay to be approved for 5:20, 14, and 6:10, 14. All other minutes are being pulled?
No. All?
Yes. We're keeping on May 20, June 10.
There's only two to be approved.
There's two to be approved. For legal review. We're pulling this for legal review.
Speak to the mic, I can't hear you, please.
May 20, June 10 are okay for approval. We're pulling the remainder for finalization and legal approval.
So why are they on the agenda?
There's some changes because the changes were made after the agenda was done. I didn't want to pull it off for the.
So how are we going to approve the minutes before the next meeting? I mean, before the next, this is the last meeting before the next.
I mean, it's not. The minutes that, the minute, for instance, the minutes of this meeting is not going to be approved by this council. This is just an ongoing, it's memorialization. You don't want to approve them. They still exist.
Can you amend that for the motion, please?
Yes. I'd like to, um, you want me to withdraw and say a new motion?
Yes, withdraw that motion.
I'd like to withdraw the motion. I didn't get a second anyway, so, all right. All right. I'd like to move the consent agenda, which includes no raffles and the minutes from 5:20, 14 open, 6:10, 14 open, Resolutions 1 through 24 with the exception of Resolutions 19, 20, 21, and 23. And, okay. And I'd like to pull 16.
The bill listed the amount of?
Okay. Second, if I counsel, sir. Roll call.
Councilmember Parker?
I'm standing.
Mayors, a second. We had one revision, the state called today and asked if we would change on what resolution.
On Resolution number 16, endorsing that NJED project.
We pulled it.
We pulled that.
Okay. Councilmember Parker?
Yes, with an abstention on the minutes.
Councilmember Shern?
Yes.
Councilmember Pruitt? Councilmember Katz?
Yes, with an abstention on the minutes that I was not here for, Resolutions 2, 3, 4, and Resolutions 8 through 24 and, and an abstention on the bill list.
Councilmember Schwartz?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes. Okay. Next item on tonight's agenda.
Wait.
16.
16.
The last time we discussed this resolution, we were supposed to do some research on the LED sign and I don't, I don't know, I'm talking into the mic, I'm not sure.
I haven't, I can give you an update on that. Okay. One of the reasons we wanted it pulled because there was some, we don't have the, the actual contract. We want to wait till we get the actual contract.
So we're not taking any action.
So we're not taking actions. So we want the actual contract. Second thing is, I did speak to the state last week, the sign board that the council was concerned about, they said that's not going to be put in Teaneck. That was, that was one issue. And there was a second issue that the council had, oh, the second issue was would the bridge accommodate the widening of Route 4 in the future? And the state has said, yes, it, it will accommodate the widening of Route 4 in the future. So once we get the final contract, we'll put it back on for approval.
Okay. There's no introduction of ordinance, seduce, old business, I think we've talked about those, shared services.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. Under old business municipal budget, given that, you know, now that we're in the point where we are with the budget, I would like to request that we have a freeze on all hiring, on all hiring. Actually, I'd like to make a motion that we have a freeze on all hiring.
Have to be taken from Friday.
They're already hired.
We already have a freeze on hiring.
No, we don't. We have a freeze on hiring to last year's levels.
Let me try to clarify that. We're saying, I think what we said last time was we were going to have no more than the number of people we had in the current year. Now, what Elliot's saying, whatever number that was, nobody else gets hired after these two firemen. Is that incorrect?
Do we have any pending vacancies that are imperative to be filled? What are you trying?
Yes, we have, we have vacancies in the police department. We're trying to get officers in the police academy in August so that they will be ready to, to join the force next year, sometime next year. So it takes extensive, it takes extensive planning to do that. That has to be done now.
What other, are there any other positions?
Other than the DPW positions that we froze, no. I mean, yeah, obviously, I mean, we're in a budget process and I'm not hiring people that we absolutely don't have to hire. The new positions, I haven't hired anybody. I'm not spending funds.
Can I just interrupt you one second? If you don't put in the person in the, if you don't put in a person in August, what ends up happening?
We're going to have less police officers and we're going to have more overtime.
No, when does the person get to go back into the, what's the next class?
December.
January.
January, I'm sorry, January. Which will mean that that person's not going to be ready to go on the road until September 2015.
Yeah. So I'm, I'm in favor, I'm not in favor of doing that. I'm in favor of keeping it the way it is.
I mean, the reason why I ask the question is because I don't want to make a decision if there's a position that you, you don't need for the township to function and we've implemented a hiring freeze. I don't want letters to be in the drawer ready to hire somebody and we've had that experience before in the past. So that's why I'm asking, so that I can make a, a well-thought decision.
And, and my, my point is, and is that we're going into a budget where there's uncertainty as far as what, and I think it's not being fair to our employees if we hire and then for some reason we have to let them go or we can't afford it or, so it's not like set in stone, meaning, yes, we don't hire, but certainly, you know, God forbid we lose the tax assessor or something like that, then, then, you know, obviously the council can say, okay, we need to fill the position of the tax assessor. But, but until we evaluate, you know.
The hour is late, so I, I don't want to be short with anybody, so I just, if you'd like to make a motion, to make a motion if you have a second.
Mr. Mayor, you can't vote this without opening it to the public. This is not an administrative function. This is a substantive function and if you're going to consider this motion, you have to open it to the public for discussion.
I made the motion, Dr. Pruitt seconded it.
You seconded it? Okay. Would anybody? Would anybody in the public like to comment on our budget? There you go. How are you?
The only, was more or less painless way to cut on the personnel is attrition and increase in productivity using technology and all this stuff. And the way which Eli suggests is exactly that. Do not hire unless it's absolutely necessary, and we have money. Because otherwise, you say, okay, let's keep the workforce at the same level without evaluating whether we really, really need it. Because pushing one family out of the town, okay, is not worse. Keeping the workforce and telling about great services people have here, people don't want to cut services, and so on and so forth. Again, it depends. We cut services. I don't go on vacation because I don't have enough money. So, and the township is not any different, okay? In a way, unless we are going to just to use our credit card to over limit, okay, and then don't pay, or something like that. Okay? And also, with all these bonds, okay, I think maybe, maybe it's more expensive in the short run. Let's do it as we do with credit cards. Take for short loan and then pay it, okay? Loan, whatever. Use credit card. Don't take it for 20 years and say, oh, no, you don't pay now. You pay later, okay? And then I'm not going to be here, or whatever, who is not going to be here, and then the next generation is going to pay. So let's try to see how we can cut whatever is possible right now to make, to keep TNEC affordable. And here, I just will agree with Gussen. I always did on that. It's necessary to cut budget to keep it either frozen from the previous year, same amount of money, okay? Because again, we cannot save about taxes. Right now, with the evaluation, we'll be a mess about that, okay? Or even cut it into negative, so to reduce the budget of TNEC. Because that's the only way to save it, okay? Otherwise, people are moving. People say, I'm thinking about moving and all this stuff. That's bad. So the same is with businesses, okay? It's not so true. I think it's a good idea to put a freeze if there is a possibility to use attrition and to use technology to increase the productivity. We have to know what is not served, okay? And to find a way to serve it, okay? That's the main thing, to keep the services at level, and not just to hire people. You might hire people and nothing will happen. You see, look at the Veterans Administration. They hire people. They give them bonuses, and work is not done, okay? So there are different sides of that. And it's possible and necessary to look how successful towns do that, okay? And not hire somebody for money. First of all, send our people who are qualified there to talk to whatever administrative officials there, say Ridgewood, Englewood, and to see how they did it. Then bring it here to tell it to you if you got information interesting, and you want them to verify it was hired specialists, fine. But preliminarily, it's possible to have volunteers, qualified volunteers from a town to go. I did it a time ago. I went to Ridgewood and found how the DPW works and all this stuff, okay? So it's possible to do without spending money. Because we are interested in people being able to stay in the town, not to move out. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address the motion?
Is there any this topic?
No? Okay.
You know, we're in the dark. And being in the dark, you just stop what you can stop. Now, Eli made a motion. I'm seconding the motion. Let's see if we can hold the line on not hiring anybody else except those two guys on the sheet.
Councilmember Parker?
No.
Councilmember Stern?
No.
Deputy Mayor Gussen?
No.
Councilmember Pruitt?
Yes.
Councilmember Katz?
Yes.
Councilmember Schwartz?
No.
Mayor?
No. Okay. Municipal court security. Do we have any updates? Well, they've been sitting there since January, so we can...
Yeah, there's really no update. We had had a closed session discussion. We had a closed session discussion with Chronic.
Great. Okay. Next thing is communications. Vandalinda parking petition. Does anybody have any strong feelings about this one way or the other? Councilmember Katz?
I received the communications. I mean, I think some of this is the nuisance ordinance with the bus stops, but I also think some of this is the tug-of-war with the Holy Name Hospital. I thought that they were given a petition. Is there any action that council's supposed to take?
No, not yet.
This follows the procedure that we use in every case, right?
It's following the normal procedure, yes.
Go ahead with it.
If they want it, they get it. If they vote for it, they get it.
Okay, so let's put that on the agenda.
Once I get, you know, all the information out...
Yeah. Committee reports, council liaisons, council listed items. Eli?
You know, I'm hours late. I'm not going to go into long. I'll make it very quick. I'll do all my council items in less than three and a half minutes. First, I just wanted to get an update on the Hack and Sack ordinance as far as abandoned properties. If anyone had an update.
We have a phone call into the City of Hack and Sack, and we're waiting for a response back from the press office.
Second is billboards. I don't know where we are with that. I know we asked for some information from the county or from Holy Name.
We got to Oprah the NJ Transit, to see what was...
They don't own those billboards, so...
Who owns those billboards?
We sent... We did a request to NJ Transit for information on those billboards. I don't believe... They didn't own them, right? Yeah, they don't own them. They didn't have them.
So who owns them? Okay.
It could be on private property. It would be privately owned.
All right, that's odd.
Can we identify who the owner of the property is? Just to make sure it's not the state, and they're not just making a mistake.
Cable agreement revenue. This is just something, a seed I wanted to plant in the council members and certainly the residents. We make a lot of money, or a decent amount of money, every year for having cable vision in our town and get a percentage of the subscribers that are in our town. Now, with the new way that they're delivering cable with Netflix and Hulu and Apple TV and all those other people, I just... We just need to start thinking about how we're going to try to make up on some of the loss of the cable revenue. Doesn't have to be discussed now, but just has to be planned and thought about.
And we went through this, I think about six years ago, the last time we looked at their franchise agreement. They have no obligation to do business with us at all. And if you...
Cable vision?
Yeah. If you twist the screws too tight, they can just go to state license.
I'm not suggesting cable vision.
They have no obligation to deal with municipalities. They do it because very often, the municipality negotiates less harshly than the state.
Yeah.
But they don't have to deal with us.
No.
If you tighten screws too much, they can just go get their state funds.
I don't disagree with you. I'm not asking us to tighten any cable screws. I'm actually suggesting that we figure out, start thinking out of the box, how we can get revenue from some of the other operators. It's not an...
We can't get revenue from FiOS because state law does not allow us to. And state law does not allow us to get revenue from DISH, specifically cable television. And so the reality is that this is empowering statutes from the state. Unless the state said we can do it, we can't.
The next item is the intersection signage. If I could request, I know we're going through the town little by little to try to change over the signage, but can we prioritize the intersections, like, for instance, Queen Anne and Cedar? Try to put those big blue signs up. I think we have it on TNEC and Cedar. But there's a lot of these other major intersections. If we can... If that'd be okay? That's it. Did I beat the floor on that one?
Counselor managers' report.
The two appointments. Appointed Kyle Kovacs firefighter and Rory Gorley as firefighters. Dedication of the inclusive playground. It looks like we're going to probably do it in August. That's a request from the person, Ms. Balsam. So I'll be coming back to the council on that issue. I bet you.
When is the dedication for the ball field?
Thursday, 8:00 p.m. Thursday, 8:00 p.m. dedication.
That's it? Counselor attorneys' report?
Motion to adjourn.
No, 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 no. We always, we all want to take out the Kleenex and say our goodbyes and say our thank yous, right?
Can we do that, or...
No, you might have.
Can I just say one thing, and you could wrap it?
Okay, go ahead.
I just want to just thank Councilman Stern and Deputy Mayor Gussen for their service. It was a privilege for me to work with both of you. I think that, you know, over our time working together, we did a lot of good. We built a sportsplex, and we helped a lot of people, a lot of your constituents, and we were able to solve problems in the community. So it was a pleasure working with both of you, and thank you.
All right. So I'll start out, and I'll work in, and I'll also do it in less than two and a half minutes. Certainly, I want to thank the residents, because, you know what? They make us better council people, like, challenging us, by asking us questions, by watching what we do. I think it, as far as I'm concerned, it motivates us, and I appreciate their presence and their interaction. Mr. Mayor, I want to thank you, Mohammed, for all your months and years of running the meetings. Someone who sat in that position, I know that it's not an easy position to sit in. I think that today, after you get off the last meeting, you're going to feel how I felt, which is like getting off a treadmill. I don't do that often, so I couldn't tell you how it really feels. To the council, Lizette and Henry and Mark, you know, I think that it's been a real honor and a pleasure to work with you, and I'm looking forward to continue working with you in the next term. To Yitz, I think everybody on this council brings a little something to the council. And we could sit here lamenting and talking about it and crying about it, but the way you methodically digest things, and the way you pause, and the way you give us, like, I don't know how to describe it, the way you... Did you... I might have even written it down there. The wisdom that you bring, you know, really helps me be a better council member as well. And I certainly appreciate it, and I thank you very much. I know that you, you're not changing any of your... You're not leaving or disappearing from TNEC. You're just changing the capacities which you serve the residents of this town, as you have in the past 20-something years. You've taken different roles, and they've all been roles that have been beneficial for the township of TNEC. Adam, also, a different style. Definitely a different style. It was me who was quoted by you earlier, I believe, when I said to you that this is not how you talk to the residents. But you want to know, Adam, you also brought tremendous amount of knowledge and drive and passion to the decisions that you made here. I don't think, and I've said this before, I don't care how we disagree as a council. Every single member of this council has the residents of this town primarily in their hearts and in their decisions. And I want to thank you for being part of that drive and the accomplishments that we got done in TNEC over the last, over your tenure and over Yitz's tenure and over everyone here's tenure is astonishing, in my opinion. I've been on the council the longest, obviously, and I've seen councils that unfortunately did not get as much accomplished in five, six, seven years as we have done in one or two years. And I can make lists. So I want to thank you as a resident. I want to thank you as a merchant, and I want to thank you as a council member. And that's it.
Thank you. I got it. Adam?
Adam, you cause the juices to flow every once in a while, and that's okay? I mean, we don't have to agree, but every now and again, we need to get a little anxious about stuff, and you made sure that that happened periodically. Yitz, you are a little more genteel, and that's nice, too. But we're going to come up there and visit you in that center, in spite of the fact that it's been taking us three months to get to it. And I want to thank Mr. Mayor for managing situations that have been very difficult at times. I know he's going to be a happy camper anytime after 12 o'clock tonight.
So to Yitz, it has been a pleasure sitting next to you for the last four years, with a quieter end of the day, and many times, we confer on different things that are being debated. And the thing that I admired about you is that you're so open in your decisions and that you stay consistent in your demeanor, whether or not you're pissed off or not pissed on in your decisions. So I've truly enjoyed sitting next to you, and I'm going to miss you.
Do I do that?
Yes. And I appreciate that. And to Adam, we were elected the same day. We went to school together, spent a lot of time over these last eight years, became parents during this tenure. We were commenting earlier about Molly. Molly asked if I remembered her, and I remember holding her her first few weeks of life. And so you spend a lot of time. I mean, me and Adam certainly don't agree. We've had a better relationship, I would say, the first four years. We communicated more with one another, but through life's changes that changed in the last coming years. You were successful in getting me to vote and support the dog park, which is a big accomplishment because I have a terrible fear of dogs. And I would say the one thing that I admire about you is your... Not that I think you should always do it, but you say what you feel. And, you know, many people should say what they feel. It would make this world a better place, because you know where people stand and where they come from. So... And to the mayor, I don't know why we're saying bye to the mayor.
He's horrible.
Tonight. You are coming back. But I'll save my comments for July 1st on that. And I look forward to working with the rest of you guys.
And just to...
All right, wait a second. Now's my turn. So I came across this quote from Emerson today, and I just thought I'd share it with everyone.
Want to laugh? Are you going to be insulting us?
To laugh often and much, to win the respect of intelligent people and the affection of children, to earn the appreciation of honest critics and endure the betrayal of false friends, to appreciate beauty, to find the best in others, to leave the world a bit better, whether your cell phone battery dies or not, whether by a healthy child, a garden patch, or a redeemed social condition, to know even one life has breathed easier because you have lived. This is to have succeeded. And I think I share this with my good friend, Yitz. I think there's no doubt that you have succeeded. I'd like to think that I've succeeded, and I wish this same continued success to the rest of my colleagues.
Thank you. I'll just close out. You know, I'm really proud of the work that we've all come together and done in the last two years. You know, regardless of what people say out of the public, I think, you know, there's very few times that we disagreed, and when we did disagree, we... Except for this budget thing, but I don't want you to stop talking about that. But really, you know, it's big work getting that dog park done. It's big work getting that sportsplex done. It's big work getting the municipal complex done. And really, you know, how we showed and how we gelled together is the way we communicate during Sandy, and how we communicated during Irene, and how we worked together for the benefit of the town, and there's no politics involved in serving our community when things like that happen. So it's been great. Thank you for all your nice words, and I look forward to working with the new council coming in, and the new mayor, and the new deputy mayor. Thanks.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Paul, I favor.
Aye.
Any votes?
[inaudible].
Any votes?